Okay, we're going to convene the meeting of the special joint meeting of the Ojai Building Appeals Board and Planning Commission tonight, January 29th. And appreciate everybody coming and with ideas and discussion, and we'll begin with the roll call if you're ready.
Board members, Wirick.
Here.
Farmer, Daddy.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Hilgers.
Here.
Commissioners Osborne, Merk.
Here.
Crabtree.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
Nolan.
Here.
Nicklin.
Yeah.
Foster.
Here.
One comment about Mr. Farmer, he has an excuse tonight, Mr. Daddy, do you want to let everybody know?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Farmer called me about an hour and a half ago. He had a, an accident and is recovering from surgery and in a wheelchair, he's being pushed around town, but it's a little bit much for him to come in tonight.
I just want to note it, it wasn't for lack of willingness for him to be here. So, Board Member Hilger, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I guess as part of public communications, I just want to extend welcome to our new community development director, who I, my first time I've laid eyes on you. So, you know, welcome to Ojai. I think you'll find it an interesting mix of many opinionated people, very committed to the community and about how to, you know, how to make things continue, preserve and continue what we have here. So, anyway, welcome again. Any other public communications that might be here from anybody in the public who wish to address the Building Appeals Board on anything other than scheduled items? Okay, not hearing that. The next item is the consent item on the minutes. Any members of the Appeals Board have any points of correction on the minutes? Otherwise, I entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
Mr. Daddy made a motion, second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Hanson. Any discussion? Any opposed to approval?
We'll do a roll call.
Okay, sorry.
Wirick?
Forgot that, yes.
Daddy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hilgers?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've had a request, and I believe it's okay if there's no dissent from it, and that is that the, we, before we get into the agenda item number two, that we hear a status and report of the second unit compliance program. So, we kind of have a bit of a reference point for where we stand now before we hear from Mr. Palmer and get into the discussion. Would that be okay, Mr. Clark?
Sure.
Okay. Anybody object to that? All right, Mr. Clark?
Okay, thank you. So, as you know, the, the compliance program is in place, the ombudsman is in place. As a first step in trying to get interest in the program, we sent a letter to all of those, there were 20 people who we were made aware of through the sanitary district, who had received amnesty and gone through their program for sewer connections. So, these are 20 properties that are not on our records, but which have paid for and obtained a sewer connection for a second unit. We let them know about the availability of the ombudsman and also the ability to just come into the city and apply. And I think to date, Sherri, if I'm not wrong, we have processed five of those.
That's correct.
And I believe one of those went through the ombudsman and the other four came directly to us.
That's correct.
And then, Sherri, are there, are there any other applications in process now as well?
No applications, I'm one interested in talking about it.
Okay. So, at this point, we haven't done any further outreach, we had focused on those, but that, but our next step would be to do more intensive outreach.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Daddy?
Yeah, I have a question, this is not my question, I've been asked to relay this question. When Tom Farmer called me this afternoon, he requested that I ask this specific question. When the list first came out, I don't know if it was a year or two or three, I don't know when it was, I didn't ask him. But he said, when the list came out, he was the second person on the list, filed an application, he was the second person. He says, as of tonight at 4:30, he hasn't heard back from the city on his request, and I'm not sure if it's going on two years or, or at least a year. So, he, he requested that I inquire as to where he was in the process and when he would be contacted so he could, he could go ahead and get into the process and the fact that he'd paid his money to the sanitary district for the sewer hookup.
I think Sherri might be able to answer.
We do have three applications in that are garage conversions, they were verbally notified, we haven't done letters for their file, to note that for their file, something we need to do and put on our list to do. And he was one of the three.
And to clarify further, garage conversions currently are not part of the program.
Yeah, that's correct, that's one of our issues we'll be discussing tonight. So, there's 20, be clear, there's 20 member, people that applied to the sewer amnesty program, went through that, that are also inside the city of Ojai that had second units. Is that that number?
That's right.
Is that what that number is? I see. And of course, we're, just for context, I think we're all on the understanding that there's somewhere upwards 200 more or more second units in the city of, of Ojai generally that we're trying to deal with one way or another here, right?
Yeah, I think, I, I don't know the methodology that was used, but during the early stages of preparing the fourth cycle housing element update, which preceded my time, an estimate was made, and it was actually in excess of 300.
That's trying to be conservative.
But, and, and we don't, I, since I don't know the methodology that was used, I really don't know how, how much credence to give that, whether that was done to, to provide a real strong number for the, for the housing update, or whether they really had solid evidence of those, of those numbers.
Yeah, thank you, because I know that's one, one issue I want to talk about is maybe some sort of survey that would threaten people to find out, you know, update that number in terms of what we're dealing with. Any other questions about the status and report? We have the ombudsman who is not feeling snowed, right? Or with the numbers so far? Okay, so we're not having a problem with the capacity of the, of the existing ombudsman to deal with the, the inquiries to date?
Yeah, I think we're not, we're fine for now, however, if there are people who are interested, or if any of you know of people who might be interested in being an ombudsman, we will accept further applications and potentially have more than one ombudsman.
Okay.
Do we have, besides these people with the sewer district, has anybody else come forward and wanted to?
Um, Sherri, did you hear the question? The question was whether any people other than those who were on the sewer connection list had come forward.
That's the one that's under consideration currently, they're deciding if they want to pay those fees.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions on this, I'd like to move into offering Mr. Palmer with the Ojai Valley Sanitary District a chance for him to do a 10-minute presentation to us. I very much appreciate him being here today, because obviously, this is a big part of not just the second unit program, the compliance program, but all of our laterals in the city moving forward, and I think if he can provide some context, this is going to be a big issue for the entire city going forward. So, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. I've met a number of you over the years, I've been with the sanitary district two and a half years, but just to introduce myself, my name's Jeff Palmer, I'm the general manager of the sanitary district. I live here in town and I'm a civil engineer, I've been around Ventura County for about 25 years. So, I wanted to talk, I know we're talking about second units, but I wanted to kind of give you an overview of a couple of programs and a couple of issues and challenges that we're facing, and, and how they relate to second units in the overall system that we operate. I brought a show and tell here, this is a piece of what we call Orangeburg Sewer Lateral. If you want to see it, it's actually, be careful, it's wrapped in Saran Wrap, so it's, it's protected, but Orangeburg Sewer Lateral is actually a form of roofing paper that's heated and sort of molded into a pipe around a mandrel, and then it cools and it has a nice pipe like this, but it's very brittle, it flakes. It was used extensively in the 50s and 60s, and we have many, many homes that this type of lateral was installed, and you can see it kind of deforms and cracks and tree roots get into it. And so, it's, it's a challenge to, you know, have a sealed system and convey the sewage in a proper and safe way. Bob doesn't want to touch it. I wanted to talk about maybe three topics that relate to the second units and then go into that, and one is, one is connections to our system, one is laterals, and one is flow. They're all related. The treatment plant was built in the early 1960s by the Oakview Sanitary District, really in response to a building moratorium that was passed by the Ventura County Building Official. There was concern in the post-war building time about subdivisions and groundwater contamination and septic failures, that they passed the building moratorium, and it was the, really the, the driving force between the formation of the Oakview Sanitary District, the Miners Oak Sanitary District, and then in 1985 with the combination of the city and the Ventura Avenue Sanitary District. That's sort of the history of where we are today, but it's, it's got some history in septic systems and groundwater contamination. The treatment plant was built to handle three million gallons a day in, in dry weather flow. Today, we operate at a million and a half gallons a day, so there's plenty of capacity in the treatment plant system. One of the problems we face related to flow is that there's a lot of Orangeburg sewer, there's a lot of old sewer systems, there's a lot of brick manholes, there's a lot of ways for water to get into our system, and there's many areas of town where we have high groundwater. In the 2005 March floods, which was one of the big El Nino years, our flow measurement at the treatment plant exceeded nine and a half million gallons a day. So, we had a factor of six of the flow coming into our system. That still occurs today, we just haven't had another 2005 disaster. In wet years, we'll, it's very common for us to see two, two and a half, three, or even four million gallons a day. The problem that that presents is, is in the environmental regulations. There are new nutrient regulations that require that the discharge from the treatment plant going into the river meet certain standards. Essentially, that means that when we get that much flow, if there's a teaspoon of nutrients in every gallon of water that goes by, you add up the pounds, you add up the totals, we would exceed a limit, and we'd get an automatic fine from the regional board. So, over the next 10 years, we have to find every little hole and crack and crevice we can find and stick our fingers in it and stop it. When you have a sewer system, it's not uncommon for there to be as many miles of laterals as there are main lines. It's kind of just averages out. We have 120 miles of main lines, there could be 100 miles of laterals. Not all of those are bad, some of them are good, not all of those are in areas of high groundwater, but if there's, pick a number, 40 miles of laterals in high groundwater areas and you have little pinhole leaks everywhere, that amount of flow combined in aggregate, you know, makes us exceed our limits. So, we're working very hard to identify flow problems, identify leak problems, and figure out how to fix them. Our board is spending quite a bit of time talking about it, looking at ideas, and over the next year, we're going to be rolling out some programs to find ways to solve that problem. The other issue, and it's kind of an environmental issue, is every gallon that gets into our system gets a free taxi ride out of town. That water doesn't stay in the ground, that water doesn't serve the groundwater basin, it doesn't serve the trees, and it doesn't seep into the creeks and maintain river flows. So, if you take a half a million gallons a day extra coming into the system times 365 days a year, that can be 180 million gallons of water that just seeps out of the ground, jumps in the pipe, and gets a free ride down the river. So, water's connected, it's all part of the same system, and the sewer system is supposed to convey the waste, but not convey all the good, clean freshwater. So, over the past two and a half years, we have had a unpermitted connection program working at the sanitary district. I'm not here to promote growth, but growth is a way for a sanitary district to gain capital reserves. That doesn't happen in the Ojai Valley, we have maybe 20 new connections a year. And so, one of the things we look at is how many connections are connected to the system and paid to the system, and how many aren't. I just heard numbers that there may be 200, maybe 300, depending upon how the survey was done, of second units that would exist in the city today and are connected to the city today, or the system today, but are not paying for that system. The board at the sanitary district has had quite a discussion over the years about, you know, sort of a fairness doctrine. Everybody should pay their fair share, we should all share equally in, in the responsibilities and, and the cost thereof. If you extrapolate that number out into the county area, which we serve all the way down to Shell Road, it's not inconceivable that there could be 500, 600, 700, pick a number, of second units that are connected to the system that are generating sewage, that are using the utility but not paying for it. We have an active program to identify those and bring them into compliance with the sanitary district system requirements. To date, in the last two and a half, three years, we have looked at about 250 properties system-wide. Many of them, and it's been every flavor, it's been some garage conversions as we've seen, some of them have just been paperwork errors, didn't have a second unit but appeared to have done so. So, we've probably added about 70 of those 250 have been second units that we have had to add to the system. Some of them were built, we found evidence that they should have been grandfathered, so we went ahead and have done that. But in cleaning up the paperwork and in looking at the properties and looking at the, the various connected systems, you know, we have identified quite a few additional units. Because of the issues with flow, because of the issues with nutrients, we're going to continue that program. We also have to ramp up our efforts because we now have, in 2025, just 12 years from now, we have a pounds limit under our discharge permit with the Regional Water Quality Control Board for how many pounds of nutrients we can discharge to the river. So, you know, we're running into this ceiling that, that every extra gallon that we can identify and keep out of the system, and every gallon that is using the system and not paying for it, if we can identify those, that will allow us to lower our flow and provide some capital to help us achieve these new and lower discharge requirements. Just for context, our, our new limit in 2025, if you kind of round out the numbers, is three milligrams per liter of nitrate. That's three parts per million. The drinking water standard is 10. So, the new limit is essentially one-third the standard of drinking water. You may hear about stories about nutrients statewide, most ocean discharge sanitary districts don't have any nutrient limits, they're allowed to discharge whatever comes through their system out into the ocean. The Sacramento County CSD is in a program to spend $2 billion to bring their discharge into the Sacramento River to under 10. So, they're in excess of 10, and they discharge ammonia, which has toxic effects on fish. So, they have to get under two parts per million ammonia and 10 parts per million nitrate. We're already at zero ammonia, and we have to get, we're about four to four and a half right now on our nitrates, and we have to get under three. So, you can see the scientific and engineering challenges, we're right at the limit of the capabilities, but the good news is if we do it, it enhances further the discharge that we provide into the ecosystem, the groundwater recharge, all of those things. So, it's a good thing, we're trying to do it in a cost-effective and efficient manner, but it's really at the limits of what sewer systems can do. For context, just to-
Quick question, is that set by the Ventura water?
That's, we're in the LA region.
LA region sets-
For the Regional Water Quality Control Board. This is all in this discussion you read in the papers about the TMDL, Total Maximum Daily Limit. It affects horses, it affects ag people, it affects everybody. Our, you know, personal sort of challenge is to, is to meet this new requirement. The high from the treatment plant was in the late 70s, we were discharging nutrients in the range of 30 to 35 parts per million. So, we've already made 90% improvement, and now we've got to cut that in half. So, the good news is the river's much, much better than it was. The bad news is we've got more to do, and we've got to identify these flows, these extra connections, and we've got to seal the system and, and get rid of the cracked Orangeburg and all of the various things that lead to that. So, you'll see and hear more from us about second units and laterals and flow and nutrients, but it's all connected because it's the same ecosystem, it's the same water source that we all use, it's the same river that we like to see, and, you know, so we're going to be working hard to do that. So, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions and, and how it may relate and interact with a, a second unit program here in the city.
Mr. Crabtree?
Thanks for that, Jeff. What are the TAP fees? And how was that, can you kind of explain how the TAP fees were set up in the beginning and got to, got to the point where they are?
We have, there's kind of three, three categories of fees that we have. The, the one that you see once you're connected to the system is our sewer service charges. That's roughly now $52 a month per single dwelling unit. A house is a single dwelling unit. We do plumbing calculations, so places like the Ojai Valley Inn or the Pepsi Plant are multiples of a single dwelling unit, so they may pay 20, 40, 60, single dwelling units a month. So, that's the one fee, that's the sewer service charge, that's collected on a tax rolls. For most properties, we bill school districts and some entities monthly because of complications with the accounts. We have about 8,500 accounts, and I think about 90 of those we bill monthly, the rest are on the tax roll. The second set of sewer service or sewer charges are annexation fees. If a, because we as a society sort of want to make sure everybody's in the right boundaries of things, when a property that needs to be sewer serviced, provided service by the sewer district, it has to be moved inside that LAFCO annexation boundary. Those fees, it's about $8,000, only 300 of that comes to us, the rest of it goes to various agencies at the county. The interesting thing about that annexation is it's 8,000 for one property or two properties or five properties. So, what we try and do is as properties come to the district and want to annex, if and when we can help properties sort of phase together, those fees can be lowered significantly because they're spread over, you know, one, two, five, 10 kinds of properties. The third component of the fees is the connection fees. Currently, our connection fees are, I don't have the exact numbers, but we have a, a connection fee that goes to our treatment plant, a connection fee that goes to our trunk lines, and a connection fee that goes to the, sort of the smaller collector's pipes in our system. That aggregate of those three components is about $16,000. Those fees-
And that's per?
That's per unit. That's per dwelling unit, and, and that's not spread, if there's two or four, it's $16,000 each. We have, the reason and the way that those are calculated is periodically, and we did a study in 2010, and we're going to update it probably in 2015, is, is we look at the cost of the capital expenses of our plant. Even once you build it, you have to replace things. You can't just, it doesn't just stay static. We try and extend the life of every component we have, whether that's pumps or valves or our UV system that does our disinfection so we don't have to use chlorine, but those, those connection fees are sort of the buy-in for new properties that, that want to buy into the investment that's been made by the system as a whole and everybody that's connected to it. It's not done on a, you don't get a share of a company like you do at buying a share of stock, but you do get a permit and you do get that buy-in into the system. But those fees allow us to, we set those aside in separate capital funds, and those fees allow us to complete repairs on the system. Operating a treatment plant is not cheap, and the, the components aren't cheap either. Everything's expensive, pumps and pipes and control systems and computer SCADA systems, they're all very, very expensive. So, that's what that fee does. But our board, in understanding what those fees, the size of those fees, the board has done several things. One, those fees are allowed to be financed in our program. We offer three levels of, of, of payback. We have a five-year no interest, that, that, that $16,000 can be spread over five years no interest on the tax rolls, up to a 15-year payback. $16,000 with a, a small interest charge turns out to be about $146 a month over 15 years on the tax rolls. So, for a property that's rented, the rent may increase over that 15-year period, but that $146 is, is flat. So, yes, $146 is not insignificant the first year, but in year 15 of, of the payback, depending upon the rent collected and the rent, you know, as the economy changes, it may present a much different operation. So, we have looked at trying ways to finance things and, you know, look at ways to help in the transition from either a new property or a septic system converting to the system.
I have a follow-on. Since it was my primary question.
Go ahead.
So, then, can you explain a little bit about, I, I know in some jurisdictions, a second unit or a granny flat or something like that, some will, some will just say, you know, they want to encourage that, so they, they'll say that you can, you can connect on without any additional fees. Others, others might say that it's a reduced fee for, for an accessory unit because there's been studies showing that they use less, that they could possibly be using less than the main house, for example. Explain a little of that.
Sure, I, I get the question, I get the question frequently about the comparative generation of different sizes of units, whether that's an apartment, a condo, a house, a second unit. First of all, when we do the connection, if it's a property that can be split under two different ownerships in the future, we want to have separate laterals installed to the second unit. And the reason is not for our use, it's really for, when the, when that property is in two owners, people arguing over who's responsible for the blockage that may or may not occur. Believe it or not, there are many places in town where there are two properties connected to one lateral. The entire length of Shady Lane, or most of the length of Shady Lane, the houses, the laterals come out of the house, go down to the sidewalk or the curb, and then they come together, and then they go out into the street. If, if there's a blockage in the private lateral between the, the curb and the main line, who, whose fault was it that there was grease or rags or something put down? And it's always our fault, but-
(laughter)
But, so, so the separate lateral is about property ownership, it's not something that, that we're trying to just put extra pipe in the ground. If the property cannot be subdivided and is such a configuration that there's just no reason or method that it could be subdivided, we'll allow it to be connected to the same lateral so that there would be one pipe going down the driveway or however out to the street, and two units, four units, whatever were on that property can all be connected to that same pipe. When it comes to the amount of generation of sewage, it's a complicated question. And, and, and I kind of talk about it this way. In our sewer service district area, there are 16 different water districts. There's also a lot of tenants, rental properties, where there's turnover of tenants. So, for us to keep track of how much water is used by each property in these 16 water districts, some of which don't have good computerized records and can't tell us how much water is used, and/or how many, when tenants turn over and how many people live in each property. And then further, because of the demographics of our, our valley, there are many homes that are vacant numbers of months a year, and there are many homes that are large and have smaller family sizes, singles, elderly, in a large home. And for us to keep track of all the water districts, all the tenants, all the number of people in each house, we would have to add significant staff to figure that out on a monthly basis, and since we use the tax rolls now, we'd have- And since we use the tax rolls now, we'd have to kind of figure it out, what's going to happen twelve months from now. The other part of the equation in talking about how much water or wastewater is generated by each house, comes down to the operation of the district. In excess of ninety percent of our costs are fixed fees, are fixed costs. We have to have a big pump truck, whether we get a hundred gallons from each house or a hundred and fifty gallons from each house. If we added two hundred units or three hundred or five hundred units to our system, we would get more water, but we wouldn't change our staff size because we have the capability to treat it. The only cost for the few extra gallons from a higher use, or the savings from a few less gallons for a lighter use, is really only in a little bit of electricity and a little bit of chemicals at the treatment plant. So the huge added cost to keep track of it all versus the actual savings in the cost per connection, the rates for everybody would actually go up. So we would slice the pie finer, but the pie would be bigger.
Right, I mean, the budget, what you need to operate is the segments, the matter of how it gets like-
How fine you and precise you cut those costs and attribute them to in each individual unit. We can't do that, given the constraints we have as a system and the geography and the demographics and the business uses. If we added four or five people, we could cut it finer, but then the pie and the overall cost budget is bigger and the rates would go up. So we've looked at it from time to time. It's a very detailed and sort of picture to look at, but that's kind of where we are. And especially given the fact that we have sixteen water districts that all have different systems of reporting and data, some of them don't even all have water meters on how much water they use. It would be very, very difficult to make that efficient.
And Mr. Palmer, I think for all the reasons that you stated, just to cut to the chase, my understanding is what all that means is that currently the policy is, for a second unit, whether it's a lot split or not, whether it's conforming permit or non-conforming permit, to be legalized is going to be the same connection fee as the primary residence. And, you know, that's just the way it is. And the inspection programs that you're launching for all the reasons stated basically means these second units are going to be found out one way or another in the next few years.
The first part first, yes. Any unit that connects up, second unit, second apartment, unit over a garage, whatever it is, it's a single, it's defined as a single dwelling.
It has a kitchen and a bathroom and a-
Right, if you have a living space, if you have a bathroom and you have a food preparation area-
Yeah.
Then that's a second unit.
And that's going to be that connection, that's the connection fee period.
Right.
Right.
You know, in regards to the ones that are out there and the new ones, we need, as a valley and a society, I think, to be fair. And so we're going to work very hard to be fair. And if we find one, we're going to ask that they connect. If someone, if we find a second unit and they say, you know what, it used to be, but I don't want it anymore, and they want to take out the kitchen-
Right.
And get out of the second unit definition, that's fine too. And we've had a number of those.
Right. I think you've been very good about informing people about option.
Right.
You know, and-
Right, and we have a couple of different ways to calculate the fees. So we're trying to be flexible.
I'm just trying to be clear that we all understand.
Yeah, right. Every unit we find that needs, that wants to stay on the system, we're going to ask and require them to pay the fees and connect up and be part of the overall solution.
And you're being driven by legal requirements to ramp that up.
These regional board permits and these discharge requirements, they're not up for debate. They now have, in the state water regulations, they now have mandatory minimum fines. So if we have a spill over a thousand gallons, however it spills, somebody throws a two-by-four down a manhole, which believe it or not happens, and the manhole fills up and spills and spills over a thousand gallons, we get a guaranteed fine. No mitigating factors, you know, we can plead our case, it's just not acceptable anymore for a lot of very, very good reasons to have sewer systems that spill and kind of, you know, aren't operated properly. So whatever the reason and wherever we exceed a limit or a spill or a nitrate limit, they don't really want to hear our excuses and our reasoning.
I understand.
And you can see spills that have occurred, and if you keep track of these wonderful things, they can be, you know, a spill can get big really quick with a million and a half gallons flowing through the pipe. You know, it doesn't stop, you don't have a cork, you can just sort of turn it off. A spill can get big very, very fast, and these can be hundreds of thousands of dollar fines.
Just to kind of get back, just to make sure we're clear also, and Mr. Daddy had a question. When you're doing the inspections for lateral integrity, again, I understand, you know, I'm very clear, your current policy is the entire lateral is the property owner's responsibility.
Correct.
Both the upper part, which is normally in their property line, and the lower, which is outside their property line before it hits the main line.
Correct.
That's all the homeowner's responsibility. And so some people could be faced with both the cost of the lateral repair and the second unit connection cost, if they want to keep the kitchen.
Depending upon the scenario, yes, and-
And just to get to my point here, I mean, I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just saying that's the policy right now.
That's right.
Is there a policy, there is a policy about financing the connection fee issue, is there going to be a policy, you think, on financing the lateral repair?
The lateral repair is something that we're working towards. This summer, we're going to do a pilot program. Back up a little bit. Tomorrow, we have a kickoff meeting with a consultant that we've hired to come in and analyze all of our data. We have literally terabytes of video and maintenance records that go back to the late nineteen nineties because we've been chasing the INI, the inflow and infiltration, the water coming into the pipes. We've been chasing it for quite a few years, and we've had a lot of success. But there's still a long way to go. So starting tomorrow, we have a consultant, a civil engineering firm, coming in to look at all our data and look at where we know the inflow is coming, what projects we've done, where there's high groundwater, what projects may need to be done. We're going to try and identify and prioritize this so we hit the best, most successful, you know, the low-hanging fruit first. And so probably over the next four months or so, we're going to complete this inflow master plan, which will then have some hearings before our board and adopt it. And that's going to be the template for the areas we go out to first to try and get the most success on our program. Current public, or current plumbing code requirements require if you put in a lateral, you put plugs in each end and you air test it to make sure it doesn't leak. So we're not going to go probably have problems in homes that were built, maybe so, in the last twenty years or so. But there's lots of old homes and old orangeburg laterals and high groundwater where we can go have a tremendous effect soon. So we're going to start the INI study tomorrow, and it's probably a four- to five-month process to identify that and pull all these records together. The second part is sometime late this summer, we're going to pick one of those streets that's high groundwater, old homes, cracked laterals, our video evidence shows that we can, you know, have a big amount of success. And we're going to pay to align the main lines, line the manholes that are old brick things. Some of us kind of dorky engineers like looking at old brick manholes that were built in the eighteen hundreds, but they're not all exciting, but they leak. So we're going to go do a pilot program, a street, a couple of sections of manhole, and not only are we going to fix the main line, but we're going to fix the laterals. Because one of the things we want to identify is what is the true cost and methodology to fix a lateral? If you call up a plumber today, I hate to say it, but you're probably going to get a strange answer that has lots of zeros attached to it. I hear stories of thirty thousand dollar lateral repairs. That's ungodly to me as a civil engineer, that that's the only way we can fix things. There's new robotic technology, there's new systems where you put a little robot, just like our camera, that we put down in the pipes. You put little robots down in the pipes and they can go up the laterals and they can fix and line the inside of the laterals. We're going to do a pilot program and evaluate two or three of these technologies, see how they work, see the best way to avoid disturbance to, so we don't have to dig up the street or people's front yards, and what are the true costs of that program? Because if we can maybe, rather than having people individually fix their laterals by plumbers at high cost, if we can pull the resources together and do it on an order of magnitude cheaper by doing it in bulk, A, it's cheaper, it's more efficient, it's environmentally more sensitive to not dig up streets, and it's more cost-effective. So we're trying to find technologies that work, what are their costs, what's a true fair price for fixing some of these laterals and solving this problem?
So that'll be information sometime this year.
Right, and so we-
Mr. Daddy had a question, yeah.
I've had the pleasure to sit through this presentation four times. On both the city and the planning commission, we'd have them back for a number of hours to, really, it's got a great presentation, very, very lengthy, but for our purposes, because I know we're running behind. You said something that I'm unfamiliar with in any of our material here in the city. Never seen the word, it's called grandfathering. Explain how that grandfathering or the fees with the-
You know, can you repeat the question, Bob? You're not at a microphone, we're on TV here.
I'm sorry, oops.
Would you explain, you mentioned the word, you talked about different fees, but you talked about grandfathering, and I didn't hear any explanation of what that grandfathering is, and since we're about to talk about making units compliant and different things, I'd like to find out what you folks did with your system when you found these unpermitted units.
Right, so there are, you know, again, we've looked at two hundred and fifty properties, and you'd think they'd all fall into a couple of categories. That's not the case. We have seen every flavor of type of construction and time of construction and permit records and paper records, both at the assessor's office, the county building office, city records. And so it's not as simple as this is in and that's out. But what we did find is that we would have a property identified as one connection unit or one single-family unit, and there'd be two there. And so we dig into the records, and in some cases, we found that there were two properties legally built with building permits prior to there ever being sewer on that street. They were on septic. We've made the determination that when the sewer was installed, that the people knew there were two homes on that property, because there were two houses on septic and the permit date, prior date, the actual sewer construction. We've made the assumption, the people that looked at it at that point in time knew what they were doing, they just issued the property a permit, and they didn't say, well, it's two or it's one. We're going to say, if there were two that existed before that sewer was there, we're just going to accept that and say it's two. That property is then identified as two in our computer system, but they don't have to pay the second connection fee. We also found cases where two homes were legally built after the sewer, and there was some written evidence on the permits to us that indicate that we were told there were two units on that property. And we issued a permit for one. Mid-seventies, somebody said, I'm building a second, I'm building two as brand-new, here's all the information, we have plans in our file that show that we were told it was two. And so again, we've made the decision that people were honest, they told the district, and the district people were honest and looked at the application, they just didn't identify it as two. So again, that's another case where we would say, well, that's two, so you don't have to pay the second connection fee. So there's a lot of different ways the information has come to us. We've tried to take a fair view again. If there's evidence there were two units and the information in our file tells us there were two units, but one was issued, well, then we're just going to say now it's two. Not try and get into what was done in nineteen seventy-six or nineteen sixty-eight, or some of the homes were built in the forties, well, that's before sewers ever existed. We're not going to try and rehash that. If we have evidence that reasonably shows that there were two there prior to sewers or we knew about it, then that's just two.
Thank you. Before you leave, I want to make sure, Mr. Merk, you and everyone else that might have a chance to ask a question if you have one. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, you mentioned that your current policy is that the homeowner is, property owner's responsible for the lateral all the way up to the main line. When did that policy change?
I'm not aware that that has ever changed.
Was it ever articulated to property owners that they were responsible for that before your recent newsletter?
It's my understanding that that's been part of the district since the district was formed, since Oakview was formed in the early nineteen sixties, that the lateral all the way from the house, serving the individual property, each individual property, is responsible for their each individual lateral, all the way to the main line.
And when are homeowners notified of that policy? Like, you know, when, back in the sixties, seventies, eighties, nineties? I mean, personally, I had a, I know of an incident of my own where we were, did work to a second unit to conform it, and we replaced the lateral, the line going to the lateral, and we were told, hey, the line's yours, but the lateral's ours. And we had one of the people from the sanitation district there, and we were working in that area to inspect it, to make sure we didn't screw up the lateral. So what I'm wondering is, when our homeowners have been, when homeowners, what document that have they gotten in all their paperwork that they are responsible for their lateral all the way to the sewer connection?
Well, we only maintain the main lines. We only have and we always have.
Well, you're not answering my question though.
Okay.
You're telling me what you do.
I'll be more specific.
I want to know when-
When you come in, when you come in for a permit, you pull a permit to build the lateral all the way to the main line, from your house, all the way up to and including the tap on the main line.
Okay.
We inspect that to make sure that that's done right and that the tap doesn't crack or in any way damage our main line.
Okay, so the people that built homes all the way back to the, you said Oakview, I think, the Oakview Sanitation District-
Nineteen sixty-two.
Have been getting that information from your office when they come in to get a permit, correct?
I don't know what the permit form and the conversation was at the counter in nineteen sixty-two. I can tell you, we have never owned or maintained any lateral in this town, ever. And I have staff members that have been with the district in excess of thirty years, and they recall that that's the way it's been.
The reason I'm asking this is not to criticize you, it's because that's probably going to be, as you know, just a major hot-button issue with people, and not, I don't think there's going to be a groundswell, because people won't run into this until it affects them, but a lot of people don't understand that. And so, and a lot of people have had construction projects like myself where we said, no, the lateral is ours, and they may have different, you know, versions of that story, I'm sure they will, given the mapping, the way these things are laid out in Ojai, which as you said, is really strange. So I think it's important that, you know, somewhere we know where this was documented. You know, people are going to want answers from us as commissioners and appeals board members that, and your, you know, your board members, you know, this to most of the people in Ojai seems like a policy change.
No, it's not a policy, it's in our current ordinance. I don't know how it was articulated in the sixties or seventies. I can tell you that everything I know about the way sewer systems operate here in Ventura County and Ojai Valley, the district, the city maintains the main lines and the lateral, which is only used by the individual property owner, is the responsibility of that property owner to-
Again, you know, you don't need to repeat yourself, I fully understand that, now you've told me that. That is not what people believe.
Well, absolutely, no. Part of the lateral exercise is to, in PR, is to help, you know, a huge informational campaign, it's why we're doing this pilot program, is to gain information that we can then give to people and say, hey, here's the real story.
Right, and I think the other issue is a real estate issue, which is that, I mean, if I'm a Realtor, I would be disclosing this on every single home or property I'm involved with. And, you know, the wrong impression will cost all of us our jobs, let's just put it that way, and particularly your board members. And there's a lot, from what I'm, you know, I get a lot of feedback from people in the community, this is definitely a hot-button issue that has not arisen yet. So I encourage you to not just put it in that little newsletter, but seriously, four or five times a year, sending notices to property owners in one letter saying, you must understand that you are responsible for, and some of these laterals go across major streets and can go under power lines. Some of these laterals go across major streets, and can go under power lines, and you can't just hire any contractor to go on there and work on that kind of thing. It could get very, very expensive to repair a lateral if it can't be done, you know, inside the pipe.
No, it's not. One of the efforts of our whole program here is going to be our newsletter and our outreach and our information, to make sure people know, you know, we inspect homes for roofs and termites and mold and, you know, all those sorts of things. I bought quite a few homes, we've never once had someone TV a lateral to see if there's a potential risk for, you know, a cost that can be incurred, you know, because of a bad lateral. So I definitely would encourage owners and buyers and sellers to do some due diligence on properties that they purchase or sell, to make sure that that, you know, is clear. We're going to have some programs to outreach to both the realtors and people that are selling their homes. We think it's important for people to know what they're buying and for us to then help them find ways to fix problems or leaks or things that can cause both of us headaches.
My second question is not a question, it's just a comment, and you just said the termites and stuff, believe me, everyone that has bought a home realizes everyone wants their money, and it's getting worse every year. I, you know, heard your reasons and justifications for the $15,000 to $16,000 hookup fee, and I can give you every, you know, reason justification that, you know, you should be encouraging every single new hookup you can get without that huge fee because of the fixed variable cost equation in business. If you're a private business, believe me, the municipality would be hammering you for lower fees so they could put up affordable housing. These fees that everyone wants, both you and, believe me, the water companies and the MS4 requirements are killing, literally killing, homeowners and affordable housing advocates. And while you can speak a very good talk about why there's a capital cost or a cost to pay to play, personally, yeah, I can come up with 100 reasons why I don't believe that that should be done that way. I think we need to actually go the other way, encourage lower fees so you can get more people hooked up, so that you can get more revenue on a monthly basis from your, you know, 52 bucks a month for every hookup, and that is not cheap, and it's going to go up, we all know that, because of the requirements that people are putting on you. So I would, you know, caution any utility representative to say that somehow that $15,000 fee is an acceptable fee, and in a lot of people's minds in this community and other communities across the state, it's very, very high.
Well, I can tell you that in part of my career as a civil engineer, I've built many homes, and I've been part of many affordable housing projects, low income and otherwise, throughout the county. You're right, the financing model for homes, especially even market-rate homes and affordable homes, is very, very challenging to hit price points that people can afford and live in. In 1997, we built the brand-new treatment plant, and we spent $28 million on it. The plant that was built in 1962 has been already rebuilt three times. We didn't get 50-year life or 100-year life out of a treatment plant. We've rebuilt it three times to keep up with the regulations. The next challenge is to meet this 3mg per liter, that's going to be another potentially $15 million over the next 10 years. So, in 50 years, we've rebuilt the plant three times, we didn't even get 50-year life or 100-year life out of it, and now we're going to rebuild parts of it again. So, those competing things have to figure out how to balance.
Correct. And I'm not blaming you, by the way, but I just say, you know, I think as community members that are watching this, you know, you want to change the policy, change your board, because the board really has to make these decisions, and if you don't get involved with it, things aren't going to change, and you got you, as a general manager, have to figure out ways to pay for it. So I realize you're doing a job, and obviously you're doing a very good job, so.
Yeah, I just want to comment that I think the, it actually is very useful to attend sanitary district board meetings. I've learned a lot going, I plan on going more. I know you're not used to having a lot of people in the audience, but I think you're going to see more, which is good.
Well, it's a challenging topic.
Yeah, and I think these issues are not limited to Ojai. This debate about connection fees and how it should relate to affordable housing is something debated in many jurisdictions. The upper or lower lateral cost responsibility is debated in many jurisdictions, and they go back and forth in different cities. I think, Mr. Wald, you can probably attest to that, it's a policy that varies across jurisdictions.
I've only ever seen it that, as he said, I've worked in the valley and on the coast, and, you know, the lateral is responsibility of the home. I think most cities now, you know, I mean-
Most have both. I know Huntington Beach, for example, just put lower laterals back with the municipal responsibility.
That's good.
But, the sanitary district is not a municipal organization.
Yeah.
So, it's a big issue, and, but I want to try to kind of wind this up, because we need, we're going to try to discuss, you know, the second unit compliance program, but I think it's important to understand the cost aspects of the second unit program outside completely. And in fact, the sanitary district is certainly a major cost completely outside the city of Ojai policymaking. That's an important issue.
Can I ask one clarification? Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
On the mic, sorry. Okay, so you said that you can have more than one unit if, on one lateral, if you demonstrate that you can't be subdivided.
Right.
So, and I'm new here.
But the connection fees are till two.
Oh, they're still charging you a connection fee, even though you're on the same-
If it's a living, if it's a living unit with a kitchen, bedroom, and bathroom-
Got it, I understand now.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's still the same connection fee as the primary residence.
Even though there's not a second connection?
Correct.
Got it.
It's based on the single-dwelling unit definition, you can go through the same pipe, but you can have multiple units.
And so what we have is a single-dwelling unit, and for the reasons he explained, why they've come to where it's not based on water use, which some cities use, and the reason why, it's also not based on the number of fixture units, and he gave the reasons why. It's just based on, is it a dwelling unit, period, no matter what size or how many fixtures? Correct?
Right.
And that just isn't limited to legal second-dwelling units, I understand, a granny flat is also considered?
It's that single-dwelling unit, we don't, we don't have definitions for granny flats and garage conversions and everything. If it has a living space, a restroom-
Kitchen, okay.
And a food service area.
Kitchen, bathroom, and shower, or tub.
Kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, living area.
It's, no matter what square footage, it's a dwelling unit, period. So, you know, that's something for us to keep in mind when we're looking at some of these other rules.
And, you know, you've asked some cost questions, and it's a fair question, and I'll throw something out there. If there's 500, let's just pick a number, if there's 500 new second units that come onto our system, there's also 2,400 septic units in the valley, that if, because of environmental regulations, a number of them have to convert, the financial model at the district is entirely different. I mean, if you're talking about a system that today has 8,500 units or 8,500 connections, and there's 500, 1,000, 1,500, that's an entirely different system, where we don't have to expand certain parts of that system. And I think that our board would be very open to looking at whatever that new model is that we would all participate in. So, if two or five convert, it's one thing, if 1,500 came on in the next 10 years, that's an entirely different sort of organizational structure.
So, a lot of issues here. Thank you, Mr. Palmer, I know we-
Anytime, groups, businesses, future versions and meetings of this, we'll be happy to come and talk.
Yeah, and I've seen that willingness, and I really appreciate it, so, even if we are agreeing to disagree on a policy issue, been very good about discussing it.
It's a good, healthy dialogue for our community and our valley to have these kinds of conversations, I think.
Thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so I know, I let that go for a while, but I think it was pretty informative, and there's, again, I'll reiterate, I think it's useful to try to make some time to attend their board meetings, the sanitary district, huh? When do you meet again?
Fourth Monday.
Board meetings?
Fourth Monday at 6:00 PM.
Fourth Monday, monthly, 6:00 PM, yeah. Okay, let's move into the discussion of the second dwelling compliance program guidelines. I want to just, you know, I think the planning commission is well aware that we, the building appeals board had a long meeting on this about two months ago, I believe, and came up with a number of issues, the city councils discussed, has come up with a number of issues. Mr. Clark and Ann McGlaughlin came up with a potential modifications table that is on attachment A, page 1 and 2, and I wanted to just make a couple of general comments, and, Mr. Merke, you can have a couple of general comments, and then turn over to Mr. Clark for a presentation of that table, and I guess we'll kind of see how the discussion goes in terms of how detailed we want to get tonight, whether or not we want to spend, how many hours we want to spend our, you know, minutes on this kind of thing, but I think just in terms of a general, I want to set a general, make a general comment, and Mr. Merke can make a general comment. I think one of the, I've repeated this, I'll repeat what I've said before, I think that the, you set your policy goal based on, and then you, you know, the details of your program follow that policy goal. If the policy goal is truly and affirmatively to serve the affordable housing goal in terms of the meeting affordable housing units counts, and to address the issue of noncompliance in a reasonable and fair way, I think that a lot falls from that in terms of a policy goal. I think some of the ways the existing program is designed is not consistent with those goals. And one prime example that the city of Ventura just dealt with was the application of energy efficiency standards on current code to older construction, and there was a lot of confusion about that in the city of Ventura, that led to their extending the program. Turns out, we have that in our existing program as well. In other words, selling a, to get a non-conforming permit, you have to, you know, possibly put new windows in, in terms of some interpretations under our current program. So I think that where that stems from is the fact that the current program has, or let's apply this code with exceptions, as opposed to let's come up with a simplified list of ways of conforming that doesn't have a lot of unintended consequences, because it's a very simple list of stipulations, not a lot of code with exceptions instead of a simple list of stipulations. At least, that's been my perspective of where we kind of went wrong with the existing program. I think that the, there needs to be a view of how to make all of this tractable in the way that we can process reasonably, literally hundreds of these, and that the current program was set up with too many complications that sort of defeated that goal. I just, I'll stop now and Mr. Merke makes some comments, but at least that's, I want to let everybody know where I'm coming from, because I also have a handout here later on, after Mr. Clark talks about his summary of where we are now.
Good, thanks, Bill. We were talking before the meeting, you know, we just sort of set this program up hoping it would work, and it's great to be getting all this feedback on how it actually does work, and I think that's, the idea when we initiated this program was to make it a, sort of a living program, something that is capable of changing over time, and I think that's the whole point of having meetings like this, where we can all come up with things that are wrong with the program and ways we can make it better, and the overall goal is to really address these housing element problems of making sure we have enough affordable housing and that we have enough housing for people.
And like you say, in terms of the living aspect to it, the part of the ordinance setting up the amnesty program, which is this section 10-2.1709, part F, basically says that the program can be, the non-conforming permit program can be changed by resolution to a great degree. Doesn't require an ordinance change, requires a city council to act on changing their resolution. I think there's been some confusion between the conforming permit and the non-conforming permit. The compliance program, amnesty, what we're now calling the compliance program, is a non-conforming permit. There is a whole body of ordinance on the second unit program, which is conforming. They're completely different, and I think sometimes there's been a conflating of discussion, and I'm trying to, in my mind, keep them very, very separate. I think there's a great opportunity for, if the planning commission and building appeals board can, by discussion, working with staff, come up with recommendations to council, I think council is going to very seriously consider that recommendation for changing their resolution. And again, it doesn't, to change the nature of the program's operation, again, which does not require, to large degree, ordinance changes. So, anyway, just make those comments. Mr. Clark, would you like to kind of give us a summary of some of the, where we exist now in terms of looking at this program's modifications?
Sure, sure, let me, sort of as an introduction to this, let me just say that when we approached the cycle four housing element update, we really didn't spend a whole lot of time going through this program. We took what was on the shelf from previous discussions and moved forward with it, because our primary objective at the time was just to get it in place, along with the other policies in the housing element. As we, as the council has discussed the housing element through that cycle and through the fifth cycle, they've expressed a sentiment that's very similar to those expressed by the two of you, which is an openness to look at these various issues that have been brought forth. So, let me, I have a suggestion as to how to go through this, and we're prepared to do it that way, but if you'd like to do it some other way, that's fine, too. In this chart, we listed a whole series of modifications that have been suggested by the building appeals board, the planning commission, and others. And then Ann and I went through and listed off the top of our heads some of the pros and cons. So we've taken each of those issues, and we've put one issue each on a piece of paper and listed the pros and cons that we came up with, and we thought maybe a way of going through this would be to go through these one at a time and to hear other pros and cons that you might have, and then see to what degree there's consensus among the boards as to how to proceed or what to recommend to the council.
I like that, Mr. Merke, okay? Everybody else all right? We just kind of go through these one at a time, and we can flesh out the pros and cons?
Good.
Great.
So, I'm not exactly sure how I'm going to deal with the microphone issue, but the first one, which we have up on this chart, is to consider, the program as it stands right now only applies to units that were built before January 1st of 2006. It's been suggested that we should, since it's taken so long to get this on board, we should pick another date, and so we said, "Well, what if we picked the date that the cycle four housing element was adopted, which is October 9th of 2012?" And so, I'm going to-
Wasn't that the original date of 116, that was based on a previous housing cycle adoption, correct?
We don't actually know, we think it came from the discussion of the cycle four, early on in the cycle four, but however it came up, it's kind of an outdated number, and I think there's been a lot of interest in changing that number.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, we did, as far as pros go, we said it increases the pool of potential units, and we just point out that the original date was based on an earlier implementation of the program. And the only con we could think of is that it would reward people who knew that there was going to be an amnesty program, and then went ahead and built a second unit as well. So, the way this exercise works, we'd like to hear any pros or cons that the commissioner board has, and then let you have your discussion about where to go.
I saw some non-verbal activity on Mr. Daddy's face.
What I thought I understood, Rob, was we had a chart, and what the chart did is it went all the way back, I don't know if it went back to '47 when permits were started, but it showed the graduated fees all the way through. And I guess I'm confused as to why somebody would hurry up and get something built, because if it's built in '13 or '14, they pay the '13 or '14 rates, because we don't say if you built it before, ten, it's 20 cents, and now it's $30,000. It is going to be exactly the year it was completed, and if we have people hurrying up to make these conforming units, why weren't they red-tagged? I guess that's kind of my question, you know? If we know about units being built, why are they being built? So, what I would suggest we do, is I would suggest that since cycle five, in my opinion, hasn't been conferred on us as being adopted by the state, and we expect that to come up in the next month or two, that we accept the cycle five date for today, but that seems to be the fairest to me, because we have a lot of dates, and we have a lot of non-history, and we have a lot of urban myth, and we don't really know why we got where we got to. And we do know that cycle five is going to be adopted at a certain time, that's definitive, and I'd like a- That's definitive, and I'd like us to start there. And if somebody completes their unit tomorrow, then they're going to pay the 30 grand or whatever it is for 2014. I don't see where there's an advantage at all. So, I must have missed that.
Well, there's other comments on that. I think you're basically saying, you're advocating we start, we set the date sometime in 2014.
When we get, when we get our adoption for Cycle 5-
We get the adoption, right. As opposed to the 10, 9, 12, or some date between '6 and now. Other thoughts on that? Other people?
I, you know, the only, this is not an opinion, but I think legally, there was an issue with Ventura when they did pick a date. There's legal issues that get brought up, that essentially you could, you know, there's some liability for the city when you pick a date in the past. There may be some advantage to doing what Bob suggested, which is just to pick a date now, I think, from a legal perspective. Too bad Joe's not here. I think there's less of a chance you can be challenged on it.
Other comments? So, we have basically two members here suggesting that we coordinate with the adoption of the fifth cycle.
Yeah. So if I'm hearing this correctly, people wouldn't really be rewarded for building recently-built noncompliant units. They'd still have to pay the fees and everything, so it would be about the same, so.
Should I cross that off?
Yeah.
I just want to know how they're rewarded.
Yeah, I don't think they really are. I think that's the point.
And then the argument, we assuming we have current, we have current enforcement to, if somebody's building without a permit, that they're going to get caught and red-tagged if they're doing it right now, I assume. Is that, that's the assumption, anyway. You know? Other thoughts on that? So, do we have a, yes, Dale?
We're going to use the date of when the fifth cycle is accepted.
I think that's the suggestion of using the date of when the fifth cycle is adopted, when that occurs, which are as approved, and we're still waiting for that, correct?
Yeah, it's a 90-day review, so it'd be 90 days from, I guess, the 11th of December.
And this would be for the nonconforming permit, we're not talking about conforming permit here.
Correct. This would be a compliance unit.
Yeah, and Mr. Danny?
Well, and I'm pretty certain we're going to get it, but we got a 90-day review. That doesn't mean we're going to get it in 90 days.
That's correct.
I mean, this could go on. We've kicked this can down the road since 2004. And so, I'd like us to actually have a real date, in concrete period, and then we don't have the challenges. That would be my suggestion.
So, my understanding of the way this works is that we actually adopted the fifth cycle on December 10th. It is our housing element at this point in time. The state has 90 days to review it and determine whether they believe it conforms with state law or not. If they determine that it does, great, we're home free. If they determine that it's not, then we will have to have a discussion about why that is, and whether we want to do something to address that. So, we don't know if, I mean, we, and as a result of that, we may amend the housing element in some way that comes out of that discussion. So I think the adoption date really is December 10th of 2013.
I think most of us would be okay with that, if indeed it's approved, it's December 10, 13. Yeah.
I would hope, too. We're talking about a really small number of units, if any, because people should really be aware of this whole process by now. We've talked about it for a number of years, so.
And hopefully, the city's doing its enforcement.
Yeah, exactly.
And making sure that, you know, there's not unpermitted work going on of this nature. Okay. I think we got a sense of that, Mr. Clark, from the group. Let's move on to extending the end date. And if I, if, please speak up if you feel I'm pushing forward too quickly.
You know, I'm thinking on that last one, that we might want to just, I can think of circumstances, and I obviously don't know of anybody doing a second dwelling unit right now, where someone might say, well, you picked the back date of December 10th, and I was, you know, after that. What we may want to do is pick, what's 90 days after December 10th?
Yeah, March 10th.
Why don't we pick that date? Because it's forward, there's been public notice, we've had a hearing on it, it's a public hearing. There's no reason why the community, you know, it's been noticed in the paper. It's a forward date, there's a deadline, and there's no, there's no little four-month thing where people are going, well, wait a minute, you know, there was a notice on that December 10th.
So it would be, say, for example, March 10 or something?
Yeah, 90 days from our adoption date.
90 days from December 10.
Yeah.
90 days plus March 10. It is March 10.
Plus a day, whatever.
March, I don't know what day of the week that is, but.
Yep. Just a suggestion.
Yes. Okay. I think we have a, like, again, I think we have a sense of the group thinking on that. All right, so let's move on to the extension. Right now is, my understanding is that the ordinance set, basically ended the expiration, the new ordinance that was just adopted by council, ended the set expiration date, left it open to city council resolution to set an end date. And so, technically, there's no end date right now.
There's no end date right now, although the housing element contained language that was recommended by the Planning Commission that suggested sequential two-year periods.
Okay.
So that, so that would, that led us to suggest 12/31/15, assuming that it started basically at the beginning of this year.
Okay.
We did discuss this in the Planning Commission.
Yes.
And the whole concept was, we don't want to discourage people in the out-years from coming in, even though they miss the date.
Right.
And that was kind of the discussion, so that's, I think, how that got up there from our, from the Planning Commission.
Are you comfortable with the two years?
I'm not comfortable with any end date on it. I mean, I think, you know, when, when should you discourage someone from doing this?
So maybe just set it the way the ordinance reads now, with no set end date?
I don't really have a suggestion, unfortunately, but, you know, maybe there is some sort of penalty people play after a certain amount of time.
No one?
Well, if you look under the pros, you know, we had, end date can be reassessed at the end of two years. Does that maybe need to get built into the ordinance that it could be extended? I think that was our discussion at Planning Commission. Oh, excuse me. I think that was our discussion at Planning Commission, that we did feel like we didn't want it to stop, but maybe it could, the reassessment could happen after two years.
Well, I think, right now, Mr. Clark, again, I'll repeat myself, make sure I'm clear on this. Right now, the end dates can simply be changed by council resolution.
That's correct.
Does not require an ordinance change. So, right now, there is no end date. Council maybe could set a target of two years, and then reassess whenever they wished, is my understanding. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. The housing element itself contained the language, sequential two-year periods. But I think right now, you're talking about how do you implement that language?
Mm-hmm.
So one way is to set a two-year date, and I guess the other way, which may be what Troy's getting at, is just to say, let's run it for two years, and then see where we are.
So maybe have a, suggest council have a resolution of two-year time period with a language in there for reassessment a certain number of days before the end of the two-year period would be a way of dealing with that?
And that way, it's more open-ended.
Yeah, okay. All right. Do we feel all comfortable with that approach? Mr. Danny?
If we have an end date, before you come up with an end date, what are you going to do with the end date? We just going to drive a bulldozer through the place and crush it because it's ended and they're not done? What do we do at the end date? And why set an end date if we don't have a decision of what we're going to do?
To me, I look at it, I look at it like this. I mean, let me give you a practical example. There's a lot of homes that are owned up here that are rental properties. People are, and, you know, senior citizens that own these properties, they don't even know they have a nonconforming second unit. Two years from now, they sell it. The new owner comes in and goes, whoa, you know, this is a problem. You know, if it's after that date, they're going, oh, I got a big problem. It's before that date, they're going, oh, we can go, you know, through this amnesty program, right? So what I look at is like, you know, you don't want to discourage someone from coming in, you know, a new owner, whatever, they want to clean the property up, get everything up to building code. To me, it's more of a renewal date, because you do need to give some people a date and say, you know, this thing could end in two years. So, we need to encourage people to get in there. It may not live past it, but there is a, the idea is to encourage people to come in, but you do have to, you can't just put it off. You know, this thing may not be renewed. If we get a lot of applicants in in the next, in the next two years, we may look at it differently than if we didn't get very many in. That's just my thought.
Mr. Daddy? Does that seem all right with you? I think, I think, the thing I'm going to bring up, again, just to remind ourselves, is that some of the enforcement of this is going to come from another agency, namely the sanitary district. So, you know, that, that policy, they're going to be ramping up and providing some of that enforcement completely outside the City of Ojai policies, in terms of their policies for their environmental standards.
So you're suggesting an end date?
I think I like the idea of having an end date to correspond with the housing element, but then have a built-in reassessment of that before the end of that two-year period. That seemed to me to be consistent with the housing element, but not lock us in. Would that be acceptable, Mr. Clark, you think?
Yeah, I think that's, that's one way to implement the policy that's in the, in the housing element.
Okay.
Isn't the motivation of the end, the purpose of the end date is to create motivation for these noncompliant units to come forward?
Correct.
If we don't have an end date in place, just, I'm starting there, then there's no reason that anyone should really step forward and meet this, meet up with this program. So, and I think it's very important that there's an end date inside here for just purposes of motivation for the, for these owners of these noncompliant units. But there, but Commissioner Becker's bringing up a good idea. I mean, there's still, is it, I think the evaluation, the reassessment time is something that we should consider at that time to see. It allows us time to look at the program, to see how it's, how it's proceeded over the next coming couple of years, and to really assess it maybe even more thoroughly, so.
So, a set period with a reassessment period ahead of the expiration of the period, of the two-year period, I think seems to be the consensus.
Right.
Okay. All right. Again, I'm just trying to push things along here.
Those were the easy ones.
Yeah, yeah. Ready for number three? Mr. Clark, you want to present the pros and cons?
Okay, the pros were that it potentially increases the pool of potential units, and also that may have existed for a long period of time without problems occurring. The cons were that it allows inadequate parking for both units, the primary unit and the garage conversion, which impacts the neighborhood. It may result in additional outdoor storage, because everybody knows they fill up their garage with stuff running their cars. And compliance with building codes for basic habitable rooms may present issues.
Mr. Clark, I have the impression, and I don't have any data to found, you know, to, for that, for that impression to stand on, that there's a number of these in the City of Ojai. There are more than just a few garage conversions. Is that a fair perception? We're not talking about small numbers here?
I don't think we know the numbers, but clearly, they came up during the sewer amnesty program, and so they are definitely out there.
Just to clarify, this would be an amendment to Page 1 of the program guidelines?
Correct.
Under eligible applicant?
It would, it would, it would require a code amendment, because currently, under the, under the code, garage conversions are not permitted. So, I, so I'm, you know, I should have said at the beginning, some changes can be accomplished through resolution by just amending the guidelines, but to some degree, the guidelines are just repeating what's in the code, and so for, this is a good example of one of those. However, I don't, I don't think that there's a closed mind. I think that, you know, if you want to do something that requires a code change, recommend it. Just, just do what you think is the best policy.
Mr. Clark, go ahead.
I just want to define, there are people, there are units out there that are garage conversions where there's no kitchen in place. This specifically refers to a garage conversion with a kitchen in place, correct?
Right. A unit, the definition of a unit is the food preparation area, so.
Okay. So we need to make that distinction, that, because there are a lot of garage conversions out there that are used as auxiliary bedrooms, or, you know, whatever space there may be, that do, way more than garages with kitchens in them, so.
Ms. Hanson and Mr., Ms. Noah?
Yeah, you know, being in real estate, I see a lot of garage conversions, and you're absolutely right, there are a lot of them. And the, you know, the storage is not a problem, because they have those little storage unit sheds built out in the back, or, you know, those that you put together, that's not a problem. And as far as the parking is concerned, it's already the way it is, so it doesn't create more parking problems. I think the garage conversions are really important to meet this program. You don't agree?
Yeah. Well, Ms. Noah was next, I believe.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, she was, you know, I'm trying to keep a-
I was just agreeing on the earlier conversation, so go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to, Mr. Clark, I'm confused a little bit about what you said about ordinance change, okay? And I want to get that clear. And I'm going to read the ordinance on the amnesty program, Part F, Section 1. It says, except as specifically provided in the amnesty guidelines, amnesty permits shall not be subject to the normal requirements for residential second units specified in this code, but instead shall be subject to the specific requirements contained in amnesty guidelines. So what I'm trying to understand is, things like no garage conversions, is that covered by that exception or not? In other words, I'm trying, I'm a little confused here, because as I read that, it seems to be pretty broad in terms of what council can do by resolution in adopting amnesty guidelines, arguably including saying garage conversions are okay for the nonconforming permits. And I guess that's, that's why I wanted to ask you about what you said about ordinance change.
My understanding is that we do need an ordinance change for this, but the other point I was making is, I don't view that as being any great impediment. I think that if the board and the commission feel that some policy should be changed, they should recommend the policy that they feel should be changed.
Irrespective of the technical issue.
Irrespective of what that takes. I mean, it could take a housing element amendment, I suppose, but we then will sit down with the city attorney and determine for sure what steps need to be taken to implement the policy if the council desires to follow your recommendation.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that. Ms. Hugger?
I'm confused, too. A garage conversion couldn't be considered a dwelling unit unless it has the kitchen-
Unless it has a kitchen, correct.
Bathroom in there.
It has to have a kitchen.
Otherwise, it's just-
And it wouldn't be subject to connection fees unless it has a kitchen, from what I've heard from Mr. Palmer in a couple of different venues. So what may be happening with some people is that even if the city said, okay, we're going to allow a nonconforming permit for a garage conversion, and then they end up talking to the sanitation, you're still going, eh, I guess I'm just going to take the kitchen out and have it be a bedroom. I think that may be financially what some people decide to do. But I think there's still going to be the policy issue for the city to have in place for the nonconforming permit program, whether or not the garage conversion is going to be acceptable to the city or not. Mr. Clark, did you, you about to say something, or?
Well, I guess what I was going to say is, is some of these issues that we're talking about tonight may be more complex than we're able to address completely tonight.
Yes.
So if you don't feel comfortable making a recommendation one way or another, that's fine. Really, we're just trying to start the conversation, and listing the pros and cons and talking about that is helpful as well.
To me, the problem with the garage conversion issue is there's too many side issues. You know, how big a lot is it to begin with? What's the parking situation? I think most people would probably be fine if there's a garage conversion on a large lot with lots of off-street parking anyway, we'd probably okay with it. If it's a garage conversion on a very small lot with really big parking problems with no setback close to another building on another property, maybe we would have a problem with it. I'm not sure how to approach this, but I, you know, I just, that's, that's the problem I have with dealing with it in a simplistic fashion. Mr. Daddy?
I've talked to Wendy and a number of other people, and I, I see this garage conversion as maybe three, four, five separate issues. We have, are we talking, and I don't really need answers, I'm just trying to clear my head of questions. When I hear garage conversions, to me, that means attached to the house. What about the detached? What about the garages that are really old that are on the lot line that don't meet the setback? And so when you talk about these things, we've got setbacks, we've got coverage, we've got detached, and so this is a good variety. This is not a garage conversion. This is a whole bunch of different issues. And then you've got the coverage of the lot. And then lastly, her pet project, and my next one to come up, is the neighborhoods are all going to be different. So when we look at the 8,900 square foot, the 10,500 VMU, that doesn't fit anybody, anywhere. We've got 22 different neighborhoods that the city has put down in that master forestation plan. plan. And we need to look at that and figure out, if we do this, how much is it going to change these neighborhoods? Are we going to find people buying some of these super lots and doing all kinds of different things and we're gonna, we're going to get unintended stuff?
So we're talking about conforming permits, not future construction?
I know, but it, but we'll still have that garage on the lot line that doesn't meet the setback requirements. So I don't know, I don't really know how to address this. I would just like us to identify how many different parts there are first, and then sit down and try to hack them up, one, one item at a time. That's my suggestion.
I think we could address it in the next five-year cycle. Like, just put this one on the back burner.
Except for the three applications we have with garage conversions right now that they haven't addressed in the last couple of years. Those people deserve to have some type of an answer. And so maybe they could come forward, we could see what they have, and we could use that as an actual living experiment and see what they do, and instead of guess what happens, actually use them as test cases.
Maybe, maybe we could just have some language that just says, you know, these are going to be case by case until we come up with a policy. One question, though, just to clear my head on this, because, you know, if you look too far into this, it gets really confusing. If someone has a garage, let's say they've gone through the program and they've got a lot line garage converted, or I guess, or even don't, doesn't go through the program, if they then add a legal second dwelling unit, they can't put in that legal second dwelling unit without addressing the conversion first, correct? Or is that not correct?
That'd be true, yeah.
I think that's actually an important point, that we communicate to people. We obviously want to, I think, I personally want to encourage second dwelling units for possible solutions to affordable housing. They essentially de facto act that way. But we shouldn't be saying, you know, we need to be clear on whether you've gone through the process on an illegal unit and you're going to add another one, and there needs, that needs to be pretty clear to people.
Yeah. When you come in, you're going to get inspection overall, yeah.
Right.
And I, and I agree with you. I, after we're done dealing with the second unit compliance program, the non-conforming permit, I think there's conforming permit issues that need to be addressed as well. And, so there's some bleed over here, you know? But I, I'm trying to keep us focused on the, on the compliance program. Now, as far as the garage conversion, it seems to me, the group is coming to the idea that it's, it's, there is no simplistic yes or no on this because of the number of side issues involved. There's no way of coming with a, yes, there, we want to allow them, no, we don't want to allow them. It's an individual circumstance issue.
I think, yeah, thing's got to be. The other point I wanted to make is, on this, my first thing that came to my mind is, how do you know? I have a property that has a, the city's deemed it a legal second dwelling unit, I don't know when it was built, before 1950. And you look at what looks like maybe a carriage garage, it doesn't really look like a garage anymore, it looks like a little granny flat. That doesn't mean it wasn't a carriage garage. And a lot of these garages, when you look at them, you don't really know. They're, you can't identify whether it was conversion or not. Sometimes if it's raised, you can, but if it's on a slab and it's right down the driveway, how do you know?
I've seen structures in the rear of a property that are two stories, that have a dwelling unit on the top and some kind of storage or what it looks like, but it looks like it was built as intended as a dwelling unit to begin with, with a garage underneath. I don't know whether it was permitted or not.
Case by case.
I guess we're talking about, trying to find some way of developing a case by case evaluation, Mr. Clark, on that one.
You know, it always seems that in these conversations, and I think Kathleen brought it up, and so did Rob, Bob, the need to define these, our neighborhoods is so critical. And if you go down this list, that is going to be a determinant with the size of granny flats, it deals with setbacks, and those are major issues that cannot be considered without knowing where they're going. And I think we're aware of that. So, just, for me, it emphasizes the case by case emphasis approach to this.
I think another aspect of this is something that you mentioned at the beginning, was that if the policy is to provide the housing, and this, this has a long history, that this is all being state mandated, and we had a lot of citizens coming and saying they don't want to see 400 homes in, in Ojai. I'm, I'm sort of, Troy mentioned, we'd like to have affordable housing, we'd like to encourage second units, that sort of thing. I'm, I'm in that camp, but that's not what I saw in terms of the citizen input on this, on this housing element. And that's why I'm sort of saying, let's proceed with caution, because there's going to be backlash on things like this if, you know, everyone's mentioned a problem that there could arise with, with a garage conversion. Well, then, you know, then we're going to get the crowd here again saying, look, we didn't want this in the first place, and now you're going overboard with, with legalizing a lot of stuff that we wanted to be able to avoid in the first place.
Ms. Wendy, and then Dale?
Anybody who has walked around the city to campaign or put door hangers on or something has a pretty good idea, just looking around, that this is a huge concern. And I don't think most of the people are interested at all in meeting RENA numbers or anything like that. I think it's just a huge, huge problem. And what is acceptable to the state, counting those numbers, you know? It's so, I mean, there's some latitude in it, but there are great guidelines, too. And the, the public is going to have a lot of input.
Yes. Dale?
I just wanted to say, regarding the garage conversions, they have to meet health and safety standards. What does it matter if they're detached, unattached, whatever? They're going to have to meet certain standards. I mean, if they're on the property line, there's nothing we can do about that. I mean, I don't think they can move it, maybe they can, but not easily. But if they have to meet health and safety standards, that's really what we're looking at, isn't it?
I think we're going to talk a little bit more about that later, but yes, however the health and safety standards are defined, absolutely, they would have to meet those. Yeah, Ms. Nolan?
I tend to agree with Paul. I'm not against the garage conversions, but like we've discussed, there are so many variables right now, and I feel like rushing into it, and because of those variables, there would be a lot of confusion, there could be some issues, some problems. I think it would be a smart idea to put it in our discussion, to consider it in, you know, if we, after the two years when we do our reassessment, in the meantime, we could be looking at it. And I'm hoping within those two years, maybe we'll be starting our neighborhood planning. And within that neighborhood planning process, the public's going to be able to participate and have input on those neighborhood plans. So we'd be getting a lot of feedback coming in.
Okay.
I just think it would be, it would give us a little more time to become more clear on, do we want to do it or not, and define what it is.
Right. Okay.
That's my opinion on it.
I think we kind of have a consensus that there's, it's too complicated an issue for a simple answer right now. Not a yes, not a no, just need some further, further thought. Ms. Nicklin?
I'd say a comment, the, you know, a lot of garage conversions are driven by people who are struggling to keep their homes.
Yes.
And paying mortgages and things. So that's also a very important factor to, and also people applying to buy a home, too, and they're looking at, looking at a home with a, with a conversion that they can convert to help pay their mortgage. So it's, it's an important factor to look at as well.
I think there's older property owners that are, that's how they're staying in their home, by having an additional dwelling in it. It's a, it's a, it's a complicated matter. There's no doubt about it.
Just to sort of follow up, I agree, I agree with all that. And I think in our neighborhood planning, we would like to have those discussions and education and all, all the reasons for doing it, but not to have a, like, something blow up in our face that would prevent those discussions or would really get in the way of them.
So, in the meantime, those people with the garage conversions are just going to remain illegal? I mean...
Well, I'm, I'm thinking of a scenario, say, a year and a half or so from now, or maybe two years from now, where the Santeri district identifies a garage conversion. They're going to have to pay the fees anyway, they're going to come to the city for getting, you know, their non-conforming status. What happens? What?
Those three already did have to pay.
Right. And so...
Then we don't get to count them.
We don't get to count them, yeah. And, and...
It's paper, it's a paper chase.
Right. And then, so I, like I said, that's why I think it's, it's a complicated matter that I, I think maybe as a group, we just realize there's no complete yes or no answer right now. Maybe we just need to leave it at that.
But they should be able, in my mind, they should be able to submit to us for approval, and we can look at it.
Yes.
Okay.
It's almost like getting a conditional use permit or something. I mean, it seems like each one of these, they're going to have to go through and...
Yeah, the three that have just put in applications, according to our code right now, they're not allowed to do it. So they went to the Santeri district first, had the hook up before they came to the city to find out, in fact, you can't really apply for a permit.
And I feel like the reason... Sorry to input here, but I feel like the reason that this, it was put in here to not allow garage conversions was because of the parking issue. But if you did do a case by case, then staff could look at, staff could look, go out and look at the site, and if parking isn't an issue, then we could proceed. Simple as that.
A lot of that might have to do with lot size issue, neighborhood characteristics, et cetera.
So, I, just for my clarification, if presently a garage doesn't qualify, you're going to give them, like, a conditional use permit, or what?
Under the current, under, my understanding is the current adopted resolution does not allow the non-conforming permit for garage conversions, period, as it stands now.
When you say, when you, the question you just asked Kathy, what if it doesn't comply if it's a garage conversion? That applies to both, whether it's a garage conversion or not. If it doesn't comply, it doesn't get it.
Right.
Either way. But the garage conversion issue is the parking, I believe, because the parking is taken away from the main unit, so now you have three spaces. So if, if you did a case by case, staff could go out and confirm that the lot and, can still have parking on-site and not on, on-street.
And once again, I'm not, like I said earlier, I'm not opposed to the garage issue. I, I agree, a lot of people do need to rent the garage and they're using it for extra income or for whatever reason. But I guess what I was just trying to clarify is, they submitted, but according to what's on the books right now, you can't even look at it.
And I, and I guess that would be the discussion, is whether we want to loosen that up just a little, or suggest that council consider loosening it up a little, just so that it could be considered on a case by case basis. I think that's really the issue. Not a, not a blanket yes or no, but some, some loosening up for, for judgment factors.
I would still think that, gets back to the neighborhood planning again, let's just say we decided to say, okay, let's do it on a case by case issue, but that some guidelines were developed.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Because once again, there's so many variables. So it's a little, like I said, I'm not opposed to it, it's a little more complicated, and I wouldn't want, want it to backfire.
So again, if I could try to summarize what we're talking about, consider with, some consideration with guidelines rather than blanket prohibition?
My, my first...
Unspecified, is yet guidelines?
I'm leaning towards taking the two years and, you know, take the time to reassess it, figure out what's going on, and define it more. But if the general consensus was, you know, let's go ahead with it, I would say that definitely have some guidelines and do it on a case by case basis.
Mr. Daddie?
One of the things that I'd like to see is to make all of our guidelines as consistent with the different puzzle parts as we can. So when sanitary district says this is a second unit, we're not off in left field, you know, we're, we're pretty much exactly where they are. And when we talk about garageless, we pretty much talk about what the federal government says, that if you want to get a loan on this, you're going to have covered parking. And so, we don't need to invent a whole lot of weird stuff. We've been famous for years and years for doing that, and it's kind of time to stop and look back and say, what do we really need to do? And if it's going to be a qualifying loan, it's going to have covered parking of some kind, and we need to look at the regulations and see what we allow. I mean, the first day Mr. Clark and I drove around, I showed him all these carports all over the place, right? Non-conforming, of course. And we need to make them conforming, and we need to make them so when people do turn them over, they're eligible for loans, that they've got as much compliance with everybody as we can. And so I would hope that as we try to explore this, that we just make everything uniform. I mean...
It seems to me, just to summarize, that we don't have a consensus on this. It ranges from not allowed for another period, for a period of time while we loosen up in some other areas, to maybe we allow individual guideline consideration. I don't see a consensus in this group, but maybe, you know, in our report that we put together, we could just say that's the range of, of discussion that we've had.
So, I mean, I, what is the consensus here? I mean, can we go around the table? Who says case by case? Who says nothing for two years?
Okay, let's go around, that's a good idea.
I think we have to do it on a case by case basis.
Yeah, I would agree case by case.
Myself as well.
Mr. Foster?
Yes, case by case.
Case by case.
Ms. Silger?
Two years.
Mr. Daddie? Mr. Crabtree?
I'd say two years. And one of, one of my, because I'm in a minority report here, you get a report. One of the, one of the other things that we're trying to avoid is that this RENA thing become a Tar Baby, that we're all, that we all get stuck to, instead of doing the things that we want to do. Like, we, on this garage conversions, we want to look at that parking standard and address it, you know, you know, the way it really should be on a comprehensive basis, not throw in something like this and then get, get, you know, in trouble over it. So that's why I'm saying, wait.
And you know, I, maybe I misunderstood, because I assumed that that was going to be part, the two-year thing would be working in concert with the case by case, as we gather more information or able to assess, able to evaluate. I don't think we can discount the two-year timeline. So, I agree with you in that. But I think as far as moving forward today, we have, we have, yeah, we have cases here that need to be addressed, and that gives us the ability to act, so.
Yeah, I'm on a, I vote for the case by case with rolling evaluation.
So, just to confuse everybody, one of the things that we have done is that we have held up on enforcing these particular units. We've known about them for over a year, maybe two years now, but we consciously said, we're not going to go enforce these because we know there's going to be a policy discussion about whether or not they should be allowed. So it'd be counterproductive to force the issue and then find out we should have allowed them. So another option you have is sort of a standstill type of thing, no harm, no foul. We're going to discuss this for the next two years, and so we just will hold off on enforcement for that period of time.
Okay. Well, I, I think we need to move on to the next issue. I think we've, we pretty well fleshed this one out in terms of where we stand.
Can I make one quick comment on it?
Yes.
I would just encourage that, okay, you know, the case by case was majority, that there be guidelines.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. I think we all feel that way as well. A case by case with guidelines, I think, is the majority opinion, not a blanket yes at all, by no means. Okay, well, let's see how we stand on the next one. And that's the, the lot size matter, 640 square feet. I'm going to, Mr. Clark, I'm going to take the chairman's prerogative, just make a couple comments on this. Number one, I think we need to keep in mind the fixed costs associated with getting a non-conforming permit. And obviously, you're amortizing that fixed cost of, you know, what, 15, $16,000 plus over the square footage. And I think that's something to keep in mind in terms of, you know, the fairly tight limit of 640 square... of 640 square feet. That's an awfully small size to be amortizing that big fixed cost over. Second of all, there is a state, as Mr. Clark notes, the state statute on second units suggests a minimum allowance, assuming there's lot coverage sufficient, in other words, a large enough lot, that 1,200 square feet should be the minimum in their state statute, although there's some confusion about that. Mr. Becker?
Well, just, just.
Don't let Mr. Clark get after that.
Just a little history on this particular item from a, as I recall, from our planning commission meetings. This was more of a major issue with the building of new second units on existing lots.
Right.
Than it was the compliant, the second unit compliance program. So my understanding of this is, we're talking about this because if we run into ones that aren't conforming as far as the size of the unit?
Correct.
Okay.
We're talking about the non-conforming permit size, and this, this number apparently simply got copied over from the conforming permit second unit program into the non-conforming guidelines. There, I don't know the history, I was not involved in the history of why it was simply copied over from the conforming permit to the non-conforming side.
That's correct. We just took the language that was in there.
Just took the language and moved it over.
Moved it over, yeah.
But I think that, especially, I think it's really an issue because of the fixed cost, and because of the situation where some lot sizes are ample. And I think there's many of them that are more than this, that are probably fairly well-built and have parking, and so on and so forth, so. But Mr. Clark, I basically jumped ship on there, jumped my turn on my, on the discussion there. I'm sorry. You know?
This issue was discussed by the council when they were going through the adoption process, and there was a lot of interest in looking at larger lot size, I mean, excuse me, footprint. And part of the reason for that was livability, you know, is a smaller unit really livable, especially if you have more than one person. So I think, I think the council's interest was hearing your comments on how this would apply to both amnesty or compliance units, as well as conforming units.
Yeah, I feel like, on the, on the non-conforming aspect, what we're talking about now, that I think it ought to at least be 1,200, and maybe more if the, I mean, we do have lot size coverage limits. And I, you know, if the lot size is big enough, I'm not even sure why it should be limited to 1,200, but I think that it would certainly help at least to get to the state standard of 1,200. That's my personal opinion. Other opinions?
What size does a lot have to be for it to be 1,200? It has to be 1050 or more, or something like that?
Um, I can't do the math in my head right away.
I don't think the state has a requirement there. I think it's just 1,200, right, maximum? It's, we, it's this community that has, you know, the county, if it's over an acre, I think allows up to 1,200. You know this, maybe.
Well, basically, what you're saying, Troy, what I've experienced is if it's, depends on the type of land use going on. Is it agriculture? Do you have all those?
The different zoning classifications have different lot coverage standards.
Correct. And 1,200 is the max at any, you know, maximum, you know, property.
The six, the six.
And it goes down from there.
The 640 was, I think, kind of adopted by our community because of the county requirement. They had a 640 requirement, and we simply went with that. Kind of like this, this language got moved over. And, you know, I think in planning, we talked about where that number comes from, it's so small, it doesn't make sense. And that's kind of what, what we started in the planning commission meeting, that it just seems too small, because what we're seeing now is a trend where older couples are moving into the guest house for, you know, their kids, or someone, or to rent out to someone, and that 640 really doesn't make sense. So I, you know.
The guideline says that the maximum size of the unit may exceed 640, up to a maximum of 50% of the floor area of the principal residence.
Where are you looking there?
That's on page four. So in other words, you can go up to half the size of the principal residence, as it's written.
Right.
That's correct.
That's the modified zoning regulations in the current program.
But we can't trump state law, can we?
Yeah, that's part of the issue. The state statute has a, I believe, 1,200 if lot size is sufficient.
The, the state law has a 1,200 square foot lot size minimum, if you default to their program.
Right.
But if you adopt a local program, it's up to the locality what size they want. So it's really our own choice.
Mr. Daddy?
I am confused, and I'm sure Paul's right. We do things all the time. I know he read what that says, but we've never allowed it, and we've never done it. And we've never used it. And when Reggie came in here with Boyd Fords, they had to get on their knees to beg to get a few extra square feet, so they could put extra insulation just around. All they wanted was a little bit more R factor, and they had to come all the way through the entire process. And so, they were told, that's absolute, that's it, and that's done. I know it's written in here, but I see lots of things that are confusing and contradictory.
Mr. Clark?
And so I'd like to find out.
What have we been doing?
Where that came from, and how.
So, so, so the guidelines here are, that's correct, the 50% rule does apply to the, to the compliance units. But Bob's also correct that for new guest home, guest units, you have to, you have the 640-foot limit right now.
Because that's the conforming.
For, for a new conforming, yeah. So it, there's a different standard being.
That's the conforming permit, and the language, in the attachment, is the conforming permit. And this is the modified, saying you can go over 640, up to 50% of the size of the house.
Correct.
Yeah, I just can't see that we somehow penalize new buildings, and allow an incentive for the ones that have been breaking the law. I think, it almost drives me to say that we have to just go up to 1,200, or up to whatever standard we set, which is what, I think you mentioned, the larger, I think we should have a large standard, and then we can, you know, make a determination from there, as far, as far as the amnesty program goes. And for new, I, we, I mean, as planning commissioners, I think we all wanted to perhaps change that separately.
No.
Just to comment, and I remember when that project came through to planning commission, we had the discussion that needed to change, if, for no other reason, for green building standards, because now when you're using new types of insulation in construction, that could actually affect the actual footprint of the building size. So I mean, that's just one component, but I agree, we've talked about that needs to change. And once again, I think that ties into our neighborhood planning, because different neighborhoods have different lot sizes, and, I don't know, there may be some percent of the lot size where there could be flexibility. But I do agree, it should be more than 640 square feet.
Mr. Becker?
Or quite feet.
What, in order to address this amnesty program, what if, you know, for now, or now, we say up to 1,200 square feet with no other restrictions, and then when we modify our conforming code, we can apply that and change the amnesty program at that time?
I like that. Sounds good. Anybody agree with that? That we simply go to a 1,200 square foot without restriction maximum for the non-conforming permit, with the anticipation of synchronizing with changes to the conforming permit in the future? Okay? Sounds good. Anybody agree with that?
How do you build a new non-conforming so you can get it twice the size?
Well, that's gonna, that's a future, future discussion. Okay, let's move on. Next issue is allowing reduced setbacks. I think this may be an issue primarily with garage conversions that we've dealt with previously, but I think there probably are non, there probably is unpermitted construction that aren't garage conversions, that don't follow the setback rules. I certainly have one in my neighborhood. And we probably all know of them, so this is a, this is one of those thorny issues. Again, we're talking about, let's remember, we're talking about non-conforming permits here, not the conforming side.
I have a side question on this. It's really important, because I've had two or three conversations this week on this specific issue. However, it affects conforming, and I was told by a couple of draftsmen and architects that when we passed our housing element, we changed our setbacks for regular conforming housing. Is that correct?
VMU, for VMU, I think.
But that was part, as part of the housing element change, that policy, that we just, I don't quite understand, that we changed our setbacks? Do we all know that? Because that slipped by.
Didn't we reduce the setbacks in the VMU?
Apparently, we made them, we made them more stringent.
Oh, I thought we liberalized.
That's not what these people told me, and these are people that deal with it all the time. That we actually increased the backyard setback, the front yard setback, and the side yard setback, as part of the housing element rules. This is, I've had three conversations in three days, and one of them called me back today and said, I verified it with Sherri.
Well, isn't the VMU setback zero?
Sherri, can we know?
It's five on the side and the rear, 10 on the front for residential, zero for commercial.
Okay, it's the commercial.
And Sherri, what was the change that was made with the?
It's a very confusing change, because it has percentages.
Could we, could we put this in a, as an agenda item for a future planning commission meeting, that we re-review this? And I will ask these people that have contacted me to come to that meeting, and I probably won't be there, so I'll be even happier, and you guys can figure it out.
All right, well, let's, we got that taken care of, but now, except for the, now we're going back to the non-conforming. How do we handle the non-conforming? You know, I know that, I believe, please educate me, I believe setbacks have changed over the years, and so if something built in 1940 is probably have a different setback requirement than something built in 1970 or 1980. Of course, that's suggests one eye, one way of dealing with it, but probably not really.
I think this is simple. This is real simple. It shall conform, or a variance may be granted.
Okay. Conform with the time of construction, or current?
No, with current setbacks, or a variance.
Conform with current setback, or apply for a variance?
Or you may do a variance, and the idea is, a number of these are on the zero lot line, we all know it. There are some circumstances where, yeah, you gotta fix it for various reasons. There are, probably the majority of them are, you don't have to fix it. But you need to get a variance, because we need to be able to have, have a look at the, we need to have a look at it before we can decide. Some sort of ministerial variance.
If you do a minor variance, it's a director approval.
Yeah, that might.
And you note, and you notify adjacent neighbors.
Yeah, and maybe there could be, if necessary, if the director doesn't give a variance, they could appeal to the planning commission, that kind of thing. It's real simple.
Okay. Mr. Daddy?
I'm gonna bring over the Valley Rio area. There's been a number of variances there. And there's been one not too many months ago, where, I guess my question is, is when we take a subdivision, why do we force each and every individual? Why don't we, when we give the variance, go ahead and just change the standard for that subdivision and says, we have allowed three, or four, or five variances in that subdivision? Why doesn't that become the norm? Why do we make everybody come in and resaw the soddus that got sodd on the prior one?
Well, if you were at that meeting, that was essentially what we said as a planning commission, that what we prefer to do is change the subdivision, that whole subdivision. But in order to address that particular issue, we need to do something that night. And it went right back to what we've been talking about in every discussion, which is, we need to have neighborhood, neighborhood planning, and then we can address that and make it the same for all those homes. So, I agree, and I think the planning commission would, you know, I don't know about the rest, you agree with those comments as well. We should apply it to everyone.
Yeah, I mean, we have enough neighborhood history where we can whack out half of these things and say, we've got precedence, we're done. And then go to the ones that we don't.
Yeah, but I think the distinction that we're talking about right now, tonight, is, and that's probably not a good example of what we're talking about. We're talking about in the downtown area, where you've got the shotgun lots, and you've got the 1928 Spanish style on the zero lot line, that's been converted. We would, we will look at that particular one, and depending on the number of factors, approve it. It doesn't mean we'd say that everyone else can now do, build to the zero lot line. It's only on this program that we might allow it. That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Becker, clarifying question on your, on your proposal. Would there be some set latitude for the ministerial consideration before coming to the planning commission? In other words, you said about having some flexibility there. Would you define the range of that flexibility, or not?
Well, I think the majority of them, you know, we're gonna, by virtue of these meetings, and Rob and our planning director being part of our meetings, they're gonna know where we stand as far as these go. And the majority of them will probably get a director's exemption. We have cases in planning where someone may be doing a single-story home, and they're going, you know, there's some things about this that, you know, we really don't feel comfortable giving a director's exemption on, so they'll bring it to planning. That's essentially what I'm suggesting.
Well, of course, I was kind of talking about existing stock that's already built, the non-conforming permit aspect. Where you're saying, all right, they're gonna need a variance if they don't meet the current setback standards.
The five-foot, not the 10-foot.
Right. But that's what I was asking, is did you want to, did you think there should be some guidelines for ministerial approval before it comes to planning commission for discussion?
There certainly could be.
Okay.
Yeah.
On the, on the non-conforming permits?
On the, on the non-conforming.
Okay.
But I think as, just for this, for the sake of this meeting, to move it along, it's a real simple thing, you say, look.
Yeah, is everybody comfortable with what Mr. Becker is suggesting?
Not quite. You know, there's state law regarding variances, and that you have to satisfy certain criteria. So, I don't, our planning director could probably speak to this, but I don't think it could be done by staff, and I think it would need to come to planning commission. I could see where potentially, say, there's an old building, the example you gave, it was built on the property line, and then someone converted it. That would probably be, be helped to qualify for a variant, yeah.
Conditions, and that gets back to what you're saying. Conditions have to exist to get a variance. And that's why I was saying, I'm not really sure what the variance would be. We'd have to defer to staff on a, kind of advising how that might work, but I think it's possible to do it that way. We just kind of have to.
Would that fall under the guise of special circumstances, Kathleen?
Um, I think.
That's one of the criteria for creating a variance, right?
Right. And so, listening to the dialogue here, when you're talking about, it becomes so norm that it should be a code change, you're exactly right. That's what the state law wants you to do. It's supposed to be special circumstances. I think that you can make variance findings, depending on what the situation is, case by case. If you wanted to do something that is more practical, and maybe less costly for the people that are coming through this non-compliance or compliance issue, you may want to do what Mr. Clark was suggesting, maybe look at some procedural things where maybe you have a use permit, and the use permit has findings or criteria, and says, if you're this and this, then we're gonna do that. So, kind of get out of the variance situation, more into what you guys were talking about, case-by-case basis, and have maybe, I don't know, because I've not been here long enough, I'm not sure which procedure is more expensive, but maybe creating some kind of, you know, fee schedule that is particular to this type of permit, and then the criteria of what you submit and what you look at, so that's very fixed. I think more people are more comfortable with really transparent guidelines, especially since they're gonna be very uncomfortable about coming forward, as it is. So maybe you might want to just do that, and as Mr. Clark said, you know, think creatively, and then let the procedural kind of follow, and I think maybe a use permit might be a little bit better.
Mm-hmm. The, yeah, okay.
And get away from the term variance.
Right.
More inconsistent with the idea that it's a non-conforming permit.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Clark, did you get that? Okay.
Sure did.
All right. So I think we're, I think we've, Mr., Ms. Crabtree, are you okay with that approach, or not?
What is it?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I think that just creating a procedure for these non-conforming issues, reduce setbacks, coming up with some criteria of when you would allow them, when you wouldn't allow them, you know, for instance, maybe reducing the zoning setbacks, making them still comply with the issues with the building code, things of that nature, and having that as a, as a sort of set use permit, with, with those guidelines spelled out on a handout, so when a person comes in, they know exactly when they would qualify and when they wouldn't qualify.
And be specific to the non-conforming use, non-conforming permit.
So, here I am again, talking about the Tar Baby. That everyone here is solutions-oriented, we can do this, we'll, we'll work out this procedure, and it's all to get a number on paper to send to the state. And I don't want to get into the Tar Baby.
I don't see it that, I don't see it that way at all. I don't see it that, I don't see it that way at all. I'm thinking practical, oh hi here, that we've got this issue out there, and we really, what we're doing right now is we're walking past these homes ignoring the, we're ignoring the, the elephant in the room, is what we're doing, and that's where I'm coming from. If these are practically being used a certain way, we ought to give the opportunity to get in there, health and safety, insurance issues that need to be addressed, and quite frankly, they could, you know, they could be recognized by the community as affordable housing as well, sometime in the future perhaps. I like what she said because what that allows us to do, or the director to do, is some of these may come in because of complaint. They're not coming in because they wanna do something. So, they come in because of complaint, particularly before they get the $15,000 bill from the water company, or the sanitation district. This would allow the director to address the complaints and say, "We'll allow you to do this, but these conditions can exist because we have to solve a problem for our neighbor." So, I like that, that approach.
Mr. Daddy?
Um, in the Central Coast, there's a number of communities, and I wanna be really clear what we're doing here, is when we lose one of these units to fire, they don't get to go back, and they need to reconform, and they're not on a lot line, and they're shrunk, and they have stipulations, and is that what we're saying to these? Because if we say, "You can do this," and that happens, does it revert back to what it should've been? I think we need to be very clear. Grover City went through that, and they said, "Whatever happens, you never get that second unit back." And so, we indemnified for the loss of the second unit, should it occur. But we just need to be very clear, because when you have a 1,400 square foot house, that's gonna end up being 800 after the fire. I just wanna make sure we're very clear, we will lose one of these units for whatever reason, and we will lose more than 50% of one of these units. And do they get to stay on the lot line without?
Correct me if I'm wrong, you know more about insurance than I do. Typically, the, the policy would get, would come in and say, "We'll insure for the rebuild of that unit conforming to current code." And I don't think the commu, I think, I mean, my perspective would be, yeah, it's gotta be, if it was on the zero lot line, you rebuild it, it's gotta be within a setback.
And, and again, we would, we, we were talking Grover City specific, the second unit, no rebuild.
No rebuild at all.
No rebuild at all. You got to keep the first one, you didn't get to keep the second one. No rebuild at all.
What is your thinking? What is your position?
I have no position. I just wanna make sure that we think about the fact that we're gonna lose one of these things.
But we're not, you're not here because we want you to have no position. I wanna hear what your position is.
Well, I, I think that if you're gonna give, if you're gonna give some type of conditional use, they need to know that if you lose a unit, or 50%, generally is what the standard is, every community makes a different standard, that at that time, they'll have the proper setbacks and the proper everything, and it goes to what today's code is, building ordinance or law. That's where it goes, to what the current standards are today.
And the current standards would allow you to have a second unit, so you could rebuild that home. We're talking, we're talking about non-conforming.
Non.
Yeah, non-conforming. If that goes up in flames when it gets rebuilt, then it would be conforming.
It would be downsized.
It does raise the issue that you already brought up about the revised, the conforming permit guidelines, and synchronize those in a more, get it more reasonable on the, on the conforming permit, and then synchronize them with a non-conforming, so we're not, you're not faced with, "Okay, I have a 1,200-foot non-conforming permit, it burned down, I can only build a 640." I think, yeah, that, that does raise that issue, and why it's important to get synchronized, you know? So, I think point well taken, but that's what we need to do, you know? Okay. Any more discussion on the setback issue? All right, let's move into the deed restriction matter. Currently, I, my understanding is that the city is enforcing the deed restriction on non-conforming second unit permit compliance, the same standard as on conforming permits.
Correct.
And, and that's an issue of some, some conviction in different, uh, in Mr., Miss, I know Dale has very strong opinions about this.
Well, I do have strong opinions. I, I think that to place deed restrictions on people such as that, perhaps just about any deed restriction, although I won't go quite that far, but that particular deed restriction is unfair. An elderly person is living in the main house and has to go into a nursing home. What does she do? Leave the, the main house empty because the owner has to live in it? That doesn't make sense. And, and then the way it, it states that if she sells it, the new owner has to live in the main house, or one of the units, or if she wields it to her son, he has to live in it. That is a very difficult restriction for an owner to have to live with, and I can't imagine why we do that to our residents.
I, I also wanted to bring up another side of this, and that is that there has a publication from Housing and Community Development that came out in '04, '03, I believe. It pointed out that there was a case in court, 1984, that voided a Fresno County zoning ordinance, which required that occupancy of a second unit be limited to persons related to the main unit's owner. I have no idea, the applicability of that court case, you know, more broadly, or what's happened legally since 1984, but their, HCD does reference possibly some legal issues. That, the court stated the ordinance violated the plaintiff's right to privacy guaranteed by Article One, Section One of the California Constitution. I don't know the legal, I'm not an attorney, but I just wanted to add that to the, to your point, that there may be, may be beyond the principle involved, there may be some legal issues involved in enforcing that. Mr. Daddy?
I did call HCD back, and I got a couple of calls back, and I went over both the cases, which is Hubbard versus the county of Fresno, and then we have the Housing Advocates versus the city of Santa Monica. One was an individual case in Santa Monica, the other one was a housing issue. What they told me was, HCD doesn't have stipulations, and it's up to each and every city to write their ordinance, and our ordinance was last written in 2004. And so, I think that we should at least make sure we're updating. I would kinda like to know how many of these we have, and I'd like to know how many people are complying, because if we have 200 of these things where the people need to sign deed restrictions, I really wanna make sure 200 people are signing the deed restrictions. So, if we have 200 and 100 of them aren't doing... I don't like to see rules without enforcement or consequences, because it only hurts the people that comply, and we don't enforce against the other ones. So, I wanna see uniformity, or I wanna see it gone, one or the other.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think this, I, this to me just rakes of, I don't wanna call it classism or snobbery, and I've seen this used in homeowners' associations in particular. I think we ought to write an ordinance separate from all this that prohibits this. It's just, this is just ridiculous, this kind of thing, not, for more than the reason you gave, which is an excellent reason. You know, we're talking about people's lives and their homes, and sometimes you need to do some things, you know, you go away for a job for three months, you need to rent out the front unit to, to live, to pay for things. I think we just oughta strike this completely and consider an ordinance which just makes it something you cannot do in our community, period.
I agree with Mr. Becker. Any other opinions?
I'm trying to remember why we put that in in the first place, and I...
Well, it was in, it was in the conforming side.
No, I know it was in, I was here in 2004 when we, when we wrote that ordinance, and I know we had a lot of discussion about it, but I don't remember why we thought that was important.
Deal?
I'll ask one question about that. For those people that have had their units meet, meet the, the conforming, they've, they've gotten their units compliant, and, and I'm speaking of one person in particular. Now, she has this paper that says that she has to notarize it stating that she will live in that house, or the next owner will. What does she do about that? I mean, if we change this, is her position automatically changed?
Yeah, if, if the city council decides to change the policy, then we would apply it retroactively to those who preceded the policy change.
Thank you.
I believe we might have a consensus on this?
No, I have a question.
Okay.
What is, what is the penalty, number one, if they don't turn in the form? And we'll go back to Chavez Ravine, do we drive the bulldozer through the old lady's house? I mean, you know, that's what they do. What, why are we having rules without consequences? It's a waste of paper, and it's a waste of the forest. And if we're not gonna do anything, let's get rid of it, and if we are gonna do something, let's start telling people what's gonna happen. I think that's fair to have consequences that are public to people that find themselves in this condition.
But I think we have a consensus, perhaps, to recommend the council that they get rid of it.
By, by ordinance, not, not as part of this.
By ordinance, absolutely. Yeah, by ordinance. So, I think that's our consensus here. We, we have a consensus on something. Yeah, absolutely, so that was pretty easy.
Yeah, you're right, we have it.
I would like to suggest on the next item, that perhaps we skip it, providing incentives for more second units. That's the conforming side, and we've already talked about, you're gonna take that up in the planning commission to look at the conforming side, and I, I think that really that's where that belongs, and we keep the focus here on the non-conforming side. Um, yeah, because frankly, I think the next item is gonna be, we're gonna have a fair amount of discussion on it. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, when I got my packet, the first thing I wanted to say is, "What the blank is that packet doing on the back end of this thing?"
And I'll, and I'll take responsibility for that, because at our meeting, we were, it was introduced to us for, for looking at discussion, and we asked, "Well, what's in it? Could you, could you, 'cause we didn't, you know, what, what is all in there?" Well, now you know. That is what's in it. And, uh, Mr. Clark, is it okay if I kick off that discussion?
Sure.
Um, I think that the, and I'm, I'm going to go ahead and hand something out here. If you look at page two in my handout, is, I have a lot of things here, so just look at page two. Um, I'll take one, and there's more than the number of people here. It was suggested to us that we use that as the property maintenance code as the standard, or the code in place at the time of construction. You'll note, and, and I wanted to, this has kinda been a special issue for me to, to raise, because the way we have it set up now is, you'll notice on page four of the current program adopted 2013, at a minimum qualified in property must conform to the requirements set forth in Section 10-2.1709 with following exceptions. And part of, of what is applied is, for example, Title 24, regardless of the time of construction, it's not accepted out. There, there is the issue of how do we deal with the basic standard of health and safety for construction for the non-conforming permit, not conforming, non-conforming. What is the best way to deal with that? Once, I think that, you know, if you look at the International Property Management Code, one of the problems with that is that it's not adopted by the city, it's not required by the state, it's pretty complicated, and I think raises a number of issues. If you pick some year, you're looking at applying a certain year of code to properties that have been constructed over a span of 30, 40 years, what are you, what are you gonna apply? Going the absolute other extreme is what I have in my handout on page two, which is actually handed out by the, I believe, the city of Sierra Madre, which is just using the state civil code for health and safety standards, and they have a simplified checklist, and they have, you know, this is a way, this is where you start with. So, this is kind of a big issue, because right now, if you, one of the things that came out of our building appeals board discussion is that, in addition to the things that are listed under the Uniform Housing Code on page two, property standards, which are primarily International Property Management Code, I believe, and 1997, we also have issues having to do with health and safety requirements on page three for fire, fire sprinklers, for inspection of the qualifying property, which includes the primary resident, not just the secondary one, and again, what I already mentioned about the, the Title 24 standards, which I think most people believe are, I think, that, that are problematical to, to, to apply. So, I think the discussion needs to be, and I, I know I'm kind of hogging the floor here, whether we wanna go with something as simple as possible, like a checklist, something similar to what I have there on the handout on page two, or do we wanna adopt something else? This is, this is a real core issue, in terms of making the program work for the hundreds that we hope to clear. Mr. Becker?
I think it's gotta be a checklist, and I don't care what you adopt, as long as it's not the IMPC, or IPMC.
IPMC.
Sorry. That thing is horrible, horribly written. Anyone that's adopted it hasn't read it, that's my opinion. It's just the worst thing I've ever read, and I've read the building code, so that's pretty bad.
Mr. Daddy?
Did everybody in here take the time to look at the code, to take a look at what we're proposing, and look at the differences and the complexity? It is crushing. I mean, to look at all the nuances and intricacies. People aren't gonna do it. They just are not gonna do it. I'm gonna recommend at some future date that the city council remove all code above state code, and we just get on to this thing. Those guys got 33,000 pages of code. We don't need to adopt any more than the 33,000 pages they have. If they think it's important, I think we should be done with it, but if we make it, if we make it as complex as we can, no one will show up. That's what I believe. It's too complicated to adopt that.
I've read and thought about this a lot, and I, I tend to agree with Mr. Becker. Obviously, I'm advocating that because I put this in my little handout here. I, I think a simple checklist based on the state health and safety code minimum is appropriate, as opposed to something more complicated like we have now.
Yeah, I think that this IPM, adopting that, just discussing the Title 24 requirement alone, the expense of requiring a non-conforming structure to come into compliance with that code would be astronomical, and that would just negate any motivation anyone would have to come forward and make their residence legal, so...
Okay. Are we, any other comments, or do we have a consensus that we wanna a simplified checklist?
In lieu of what?
In lieu of IPMC or some other year building code, our current building code.
But what would the actual change be?
Well, I'll give you an example. You'll notice that in the current program, it, it says, except, unless, without exceptions, apply this Section 10-2.1709, and further on, you have the 10.2-1709 in the current ordinance, except for Section F, and you'll notice over there on the second page, second units, including any portion of the pre-existing primary unit which would be incorporated into a second unit, shall comply with the minimum standards of Title 24, which is not just energy. If you, if you take that literally, it could mean that to get a, a non-conforming permit, you'd have to replace all your windows, for example.
Codes outside are...
You know, there's, so there's, it goes on from there.
Well, what, you know, what's interesting about this conversation is, what Bob said is germane. The codes are crushing. Like, if someone...
Yes.
Wants to build something, it is, it's bone crushing. And, so, I don't think you can just separate it, the fact that because someone got it done, we're gonna, you know, you know, just let the whole thing slide while if someone who wants to do it right is gonna have to be crushed in the process.
I think one distinction to make is that the state law allows the non-conforming compliance permit to not be subject to current state minimum code, whereas we have no choice for new construction but to be in compliance with current state minimum code.
So, we should, we should work on other, other ways that we could do that.
I, I agree.
For in the future.
I, I agree. I'm, I'm just saying, the, the degree of freedom that, that's my understanding of the degree of freedom that council can endorse right now, that we...
Yeah, I mean, I, I totally agree, and to me, it just, it's, it's like the state's doing it because they know they, that programs like the one we're looking at are out there, and the communities have to do something to bring them as close to being, you know, safe and whatever as they can. That's the only reason I think they've, they've done that. But to, to me, what it just says, when people re, you know, fortunately, most people don't have to build a new home, or remodel extensively, if they knew what was going on, believe me, there would be an uproar. It just is unbelievable what's being required. I mean, this whole thing about Title 24, why don't you just throw in MS4 while you're at it? And that'll really, you know, that'll just, you know, end it.
So, so I don't disagree with Mr. Crap, I'm just drawing the distinction of what we can practically recommend for immediate action versus things that require more...
We have, we have to do it as a separate checklist, when you think about it. I don't think we have a choice.
Right, we have no choice but to do it separately, yeah.
Okay, to get to the checklist, nothing gets... Okay, to get to the checklist, nothing gets done without a deadline. We need a deadline. Somebody's gotta be responsible for putting this checklist together, making sure it's correct, getting this thing out in 30 days. Planning Commission, some type of ad hoc committee, from whoever you want, whether we get an ad hoc from the building, an ad hoc from the Planning Commission, so we can meet within the Brown Act guidelines, and-
May, may I suggest that maybe-
Make it get done quickly, 30 days, and over. And, and get this thing out there so people can see it, and, and we can get this ball rolling. I mean, you know, construction time is coming up.
What do you think-
It will rain.
What's the collective feeling about Mr. Merkinai being the ad hoc committee, working with staff, to get something to circulate to the group? Is that's allowed under the Brown Act, just the two of us, right?
Yeah, it, it's-
As a special purpose committee, a special ad hoc committee?
If, if, if an ad hoc committee is composed of members of two bodies, it, it becomes a Brown Act meeting, which is fine. I mean, we can do it in an open meeting. I don't have any problem with that.
Okay. All right. And so, okay, so I think we, we have a consensus about how we want to proceed with, with the issue of the, the standards. Let me get back to this thing. And I, so, the other, I guess we're pretty much, oh, well, there are two issues I wanted to bring up. One is, I, I'd like to feedback, an idea that I've had to try to get this thing moving faster, and not lay it all on the ombudsman, is, is the, the idea of if we develop a checklist, having licensed contractors sort of pre-approved by the city, where applicants could pay a fee for that contractor to work through their checklist with them. And that way, it's not all laid on the ombudsman, because again, we're, we're hoping to ramp up into higher numbers rather than smaller numbers. I'm thinking a lot of people might want to pay a, a fee to a licensed contractor to, to get a checklist gone through. What are your, other thoughts?
You know, I'm not gonna be on planning very much longer, and I've advocated this, I've talked to Sherry about it over the years. We need, I personally believe we need to have a top 25 list, top 50 list, call it what you want. Because of the state codes, for example, it requires a permit to get a water heater changed, which most people don't do.
Right.
And I don't really, I agree with them. However, there are people that want, that can't put in their own hot water heater. So we have a top 50 list of items that you can do, and as long as you do it with a licensed contractor, you pay no fee. And you get a free inspection by the, if you, if you want to do it yourself, you get a free inspection by the building inspector to make sure it's done properly. Top 50 list, moving a plug, you know, that kind of thing. Water heaters, there's a, maybe it's a top 25 list, but if you use a licensed contractor in good standing, this is an encouragement to use that contractor.
And I believe some cities have either a minimal or zero fee for very standard things like that. Then they also have, I believe, faxed permits, where you can fax in an application and get faxed the permit back, or email attachment, whatever. The point trying to do is to make it practical and easy, you know, so that's maybe in the same vein, we can, in terms of talking about-
Yeah, I think if you can come up with that list with some contractors, and, and as part of, you know, what you're doing here, then we can actually go the other way and make it part of our policy with-
In general, yeah.
In general, yeah.
And the other thing I wanted to raise is, is should there, should the non-conforming permit person have an ability to appeal a decision of staff, or not? On a, on a, on a second unit conforming permit?
They do.
They do have that right already? Okay.
Yeah, staff, staff determinations are appealable.
To?
This would probably be Planning Commission.
Be Planning Commission, okay. That makes sense, okay.
Well, even if they don't, they do, because it's such a small town, they do.
Yeah, 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 okay.
And only all of us understand that.
All right, so-
I just have a quick, a quick question, and I may have missed it, it may be in, in this document. All right, let's say, not, somebody gets a permit for the non-conforming unit. If they decide to do a remodel on that down the road, and they're gonna, let's say, move the toilet in the sink, or do some electrical work which would require a permit, then, then they just go ahead and follow the regular permit procedure and-
For, for that, for that work, yes.
Should that work, okay.
Right. Not, I don't think it kicks them in requiring a conforming permit for the whole structure.
Right.
But I, I think-
Just for that work.
Is that Mr. Clark, is that correct?
Yeah, what, once they've become conforming, they're in the system.
When they become legal, they're in the system. They're not conforming yet. They're non-conforming. Yeah, they're legal.
Once they become compliant.
Yeah, compliant, yes. That's correct, yeah. Right. But I, I do think there is a large issue. I mean, that's why, I mean, you know, I, I don't, I can't imagine how many water heaters are going in, you know, without permits.
All of them.
Yeah. And you know, and I think that philosophically is a good point, because if, if you make it easy, then you probably get a higher standard of, of installation, if you make it easy.
Well, I, I can tell you this, and I've seen this. A water heater is a time bomb.
Yes.
For one or another reason. The most important one is, they see that little female screw on the side, and people, what do they do with that thing? They put a cap on it. Yeah. So, yeah, there are certain things we need to say. Even as simple as, you know, a senior citizen wants to move a plug in the kitchen, you know, make it inexpensive, encourage them to do it with a contractor, and, and low fees, because it's a safety issue.
Will have a higher standard of safety that way.
And it avoids a very, you know, potentially disastrous situation. Right now, it's, no one wants to get any, they don't want to buy, they don't want to permit that stuff at all.
Right, right. You know, it, it's, it's an interest of all of us to have-
Well, and it encourages them to use a non-licensed contractor, because nowadays, if you're a contractor and you do that without a permit, your, your license is on the line.
Right, so, unlicensed, exactly. Okay. Are we done with our workshop?
Need to, you need to set a, you need to set up the Building Appeals Board, not the Planning Commission.
Yeah, the Building Appeals Board has another item of business left. I just didn't want to hold back commission members.
No, I, I think it was a very productive workshop, and I, I think it was a great idea to do this.
I think we should do this more often. I think it was very productive. So, you're welcome to stay, but we have another item of business to finish, and- So, we'll figure out a way to do this in a compliant fashion, for you and I to come up with something. Okay? Yeah.
Yeah, we, we can, we can transcribe the charts
Okay.
with the recommendations, and sort of use that as a starting point.
But since he and I would be working together, we'd have to notice our meeting.
Yeah.
And then whoever wants to come can-
Yeah.
Okay. That should be-
Going to lunch, Jerry?
Yeah. You can do that, too.
Yeah.
But that doesn't, that won't, that won't involve, you know, as long as we don't just talk business, you know. Okay, let's try to wind this up quickly. Building Appeals Board, we have, I'm sorry. We have a, a couple of quick thing, uh, quick things to take care of. One is the fact that we have an item delegated to us by the city council to consider Appendix L. The date, February 12th, is something that Rob and I came up with, is the next practical date, as soon as possible for us to consider Appendix L. And I believe, if, we, we would all get the, the full package the city council got on this to look at in a well in advance of that date, if that date is acceptable for everyone. But the, you know, there's certainly some pressure for us to get a recommendation back to council as soon as possible. And so, February 12th was the date that, that we came up with is the next, Mr. Clark, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I, I, that date would work well for everybody.
Okay, so we're all okay with that? And then we'll, I, I think everybody's just gonna have to commit to doing a lot of reading of, a lot of complicated, you know, detail there on, about FAR code, and then we just, so we have an understanding of what we're recommending back to council, you know? Absolutely. And then the other-
Sooner than later, because if it's a lot of reading.
Yeah, if, if, do you think we could get that out sooner rather than later? Distribute it to us, Mr. Clark?
I don't know about tomorrow, but we should be able to get it out next week.
That'd be fine. That'd be fine. Because it, we are gonna have to commit some time to reading this. The council has asked us to do this. I want to, you know, we, we want to come back with a, as a responsible and informed recommendation as possible. The other item that we haven't covered is items for future agendas. And this would be added to the February 12th
Yes.
meeting, if we have items that any board members wish to add to that meeting of February 12th. Anything?
We have until the 8th or 9th or 7th to dream up some ideas.
Yeah, we, we, we'll put this on every agenda, so when you meet on the 12th, if you have other suggestions for future meetings, you can bring those forward then.
Yeah. What if Mr. Daddy dreams something up that he wants to email to you before?
That's really scary, I don't know. Well, if, if we send, if we send this agenda out, say, by Tuesday of next week, get to us before, by the end of the day Monday.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Clark. Okay, I believe we are ready to adjourn, and I appreciate everyone's participation and time. So, thank you very much. We're adjourned.